Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission for April 7th to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman is absent tonight. Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Marsters?
Present.
Vice Chair Silberman?
Present.
Chair Harper Pedersen?
Present.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Public comment is limited to items that are not on the listed agenda. Is anybody here to speak on an item not on the listed agenda? I do have one speaker card in front of me that I don't recognize as an agenda item. Please approach.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I come from Enryville. Many years ago, my solar car was stolen here in San Carlo, and the police misdirected the investigation. In other words, I was never consulted, ever. And the chief, who was in charge at that time, just gave my solar car to the thief. And I've been complaining ever since, but the city and the police have been immune for, I don't want to say retaliation, but to listen to my claim. They just ignore me. So this is what I have made the claim is that the police in San Carlo, they just protect the thief. It's that simple. The second issue I have here is that I have made a pledge to try to help the homeless. And I found that through the discovery of the paper that the Metropolitan Commission in Oakland and Caltrain have contracted in 205, $300 million. I mean, this is millions, $300 million of dollars for the demolition of the Old Bay Bridge. And last week, there was a big scrabble in the city of A Ward because they could not get $12,000 to help the homeless because of something in the paperwork. So I want to mention that and bring to your attention that the Old Bay Bridge has the lower deck and the upper deck, which can be modified, transformed to home, to make habitat for the homeless. The bridge has all the utility, the water, electricity, sewage, everything. It will be practical to transform the Bay Bridge into habitat for the homeless instead of destroying the bridge to send the piece three feet by feet to feed the furnace someplace in Asia. I mean, this is ridiculous. I want to bring that to your attention. You can see the discovery of this paperwork by the MTC and the Caltrain. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other public comments slips. I'd like to, before we move on, I'd actually like to address the order of the agenda real quick. I hope this is the appropriate time to do that. First, I wanted to ask if anybody wanted to remove the consent item or keep the consent item on. Okay, seeing nothing there. Secondly, I just wanted to, under our public hearing, I wanted to move item A to the end and move item B and C up top so that the applicants had a chance to speak before we went on to discuss the zoning ordinance. Okay, great. Do I need a motion for that?
You can make one.
Okay.
I move to approve the amendments to the agenda as described by the chair.
Second.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, well, in that case, let's go ahead and move on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the March 17th minutes?
Through the chair, staff does have a couple of amendments that they would like to note for the record.
Great, thank you.
I'll go ahead and start. For the record, under those in attendance, I want to include Community Development Director Al Savay, also Kimberly Chu, and Jill Lewis. And then, under the public hearing, the address for the item at Old County Road should actually read 1087 Old County Road.
Great, thank you. Any other changes or additions to the minutes? Okay, can I enter?
There's two typos. One on the top of page two, the word should be illuminated, not illumination. And there was another one, but now I lost it. And it'll be saved for prosperity, I think.
Okay. Can I go ahead, then, and get a motion to approve the minutes with the changes?
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Well, now, we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent, to the consent item. That's the general plan conformity determination for capital improvement projects proposed for fiscal years 2014 and 2016. Since it's a consent item, do we make a motion?
Yes, you'll still need to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, great. Okay, would somebody like to go ahead and make a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve the general plan. This is a consent, so we're making a recommendation to the city council on this.
I believe the resolution is to make a recommendation.
Right. Okay. So I move that we make a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the general plan conformity determination for capital improvement projects proposed for fiscal years 2014 through 2016.
And did you mention that we're adopting the resolution, the attached resolution? I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay.
You know, I, why don't we just make the motion in the board memo? The resolution is, is a resolution of the Planning Commission.
Yeah. So I move that the Planning Commission adopt the attached resolution and determine that the capital improvement program for fiscal year 2014-2016 is inconformity with the general plan based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
May I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, now, we're moving on to our public hearing items. Since I do see some new people in the audience, I'm going to go ahead and just review the procedures for the public hearing. The staff is going to present a report on the history, physical features of the application, followed with staff's recommendations. Then, the application will come up and make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested members of the community have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor will be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendations. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or somebody else raised during a public hearing, described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speakers form, which is found near the door, and hand it to staff. Staff will then bring it to the dais, and we'll call you in the order that we get those forms. Thank you very much. And per our revised order, we are going to start with 1673 Laurel Street. Consideration of a conditional use permit and design review approval. Hi, Jill.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Jill Lewis, and I am presenting the staff report for the consideration of a request for a conditional use permit and design review approval associated with the construction of a new four-story mixed-use building at 1673 Laurel Street. This is a 4,998-square-foot vacant lot on the east side of Laurel Street between Central Avenue and St. Francis Way. The zoning is MU-SB, which is mixed-use South Boulevard, and the general plan land use designation is neighborhood retail and mixed-use medium density, which allows a density between 21 and 50 dwelling units per acre. This district is intended to facilitate the transformation of their southern portion of El Camino Real into a multimodal mixed-use corridor. The physical form varies to reflect the urban character of the El Camino Real corridor and to transition to surrounding lower-density districts. This district allows a mix of residential development of up to 50 dwelling units per acre and retail and commercial uses, as well as hotels and other commercial uses oriented toward a regional market. The zoning district implements the general plan land use designation as well. The proposed new structure is a four-story mixed-use building consisting of one commercial space on the first story in front of nine covered parking spaces and two apartments on each of the next three stories. For residential units with two or more bedrooms, the required parking per code is one and a half spaces per unit with at least one covered space per unit. With six apartments with two bedrooms per unit, the required number of parking spaces is nine spaces. As the proposed commercial space is less than 1,500 square feet in an area, the commercial use is not required to provide onsite parking as long as the future tenant is conducting business as retail sales, personal services, eating and drinking establishment, food and beverage retail sales, offices, walk-in clientele, and banks and financial institutions. In addition, the applicant has asked staff to consider the provision of one eight-foot-wide parking stall, two eight-foot, two-inch-wide parking stalls, and a nine-foot, 10-inch-wide access off the alley. The applicant proposes consideration of a maximum FAR of 2.70. The maximum allowable FAR may be increased by up to 10% for buildings that contain a mix of residential and non-residential uses. The applicant has proposed one charging station for an electric car, solar panel installations, and Cal Green building measures that exceed the minimum by 28 points. The proposed use is consistent with the mixed-use districts chapter. An increase in FAR is permitted upon review and approval of a Planning Commission conditional use permit. The project is consistent with the neighborhood retail and mixed-use medium-density designation, which allows for commercial uses and residential densities of up to 50 dwelling units per acre. In addition, I'd like to point out the following use-related policies contained within the general plan. Policy LU 1.2 encourage the development of higher-density housing and support additional job growth within the TOD corridor while being sensitive to surrounding uses. Policy LU 1.5 support land use patterns in the TOD corridor that will attract and serve riders of public transit. Policy LU 8.13 require parking areas associated with the development to be located and designed in a manner to minimize visual impact to the greatest extent feasible. The request for an FAR increase will not be adverse to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the community, nor is it detrimental to surrounding properties or improvements. The proposed use complies with the design and development standards established within the MU SB or mixed-use South Boulevard District. Any future signage would be submitted under separate application. The design, location, size, and operating characteristics of the proposed activity are compatible with the surrounding uses in the area and reasonably foreseeable land uses. The site is physically suitable for the type, density, and intensity of use being proposed. The development proposes the maximum density allowed under the zoning ordinance and general plan, which is six units. This is a ground-level floor and site plan. The proposed new structure, as I mentioned, is a four-story mixed-use building consisting of one commercial space with the tenant to be determined on the first story in front of nine covered parking spaces and two apartments each on the next three stories. The existing curb cut will be abandoned and replaced with curb and gutter, and at least three on-street parking spaces will be reclaimed. A nine-foot, 10-inch-wide one-way driveway off of the public alley provides access into and out of the garage. There are five standard parking spaces, one ADA-accessible parking space, and three compact parking spaces proposed. Along with the covered parking in the garage, there is a room dedicated to long-term bicycle parking, a room dedicated to trash and recycling containers, two sets of stairs, one of which is at the front right corner of the building and one at the right rear corner of the building, and elevator access to all floors. Two bicycle racks immediately outside the ground floor commercial space provide short-term bicycle parking for four. Total square footage of the ground floor is 4,242 square feet. The second, third, and fourth floors are entirely multifamily residential units consisting of two-bedroom and two-and-a-half-bathroom apartment units ranging from 1,234 square feet to 1,488 square feet. The second-story floor plan is typical of the third-story floor plan as well. The front units have access to balconies off the bedroom and living room and shared access off the second bedroom to a landscaped courtyard or private balcony in the case of the third floor. The rear units have access to balconies off the master bedroom and shared access off of the second bedroom to the same landscaped courtyard or private balcony, which is the case of the third floor. Hard to tell by this picture, but the fourth floor is stepped back an additional 10 feet from the elevation below, which is required in the MU SB district. The front unit has access to a deck off of the living room and dining room and also the master bedroom that is partially covered by a three-foot-deep metal trellis. There's a balcony off the second bedroom as well. The rear unit has a balcony off of the master bedroom and the second bedroom. The roof is flat and accessed by an operable roof hatch. These are color renderings of the front elevation as seen in various stages of submittal. Beige porcelain tiles are proposed for the ground floor with tempered glass entry doors at the storefront in a clear anodized finish. The majority of the exterior walls will be cream-colored stucco with floor delineations using 3/4-inch aluminum reglet reveals throughout the entire facade. Green apple horizontal plank siding provides accents for the portions of the facade directly adjacent to the master bedrooms on the second and third floors and for the entire facade on the fourth floor, which is also framed by a three-foot-deep open metal trellis near the roof line. The same siding is found on the rear elevation at the balconies and on the right and left side elevations as a way to break up the blank walls. An aluminum and tempered glass railing system is proposed for each of the three balconies on the front elevation. Metal railings are proposed at the rear balconies and the third and fourth floor balconies on the west elevation. A golden rod-hued perforated metal is provided at the faux balconies on the second and third floors. The architectural frame around the living room windows that protrudes from the second and third floors is smooth stucco in a deep pumpkin tone. So there's a picture of the front elevation. You probably can't see the material notes, but I described them fully. And this is how they propose to break up those long blank walls using different materials and the aluminum reglets. And again, on the left side elevation, where you also have the balconies that break up that wall. The proposal is consistent with the applicable standards and requirements of the mixed-use districts chapter. This proposal is also consistent with the applicable landscaping requirements as stated within Chapter 18.18 landscaping. The proposal is consistent with the applicable parking requirements as stated within Chapter 18.20, parking and loading as detailed previously. The project is also consistent with the following design-related policies and goals contained within the general plan and housing element. Policy LU 8.1 require all development to feature high-quality design that enhances the visual character of San Carlos. Policy LU 8.5 optimize architectural quality by encouraging the use of quality materials, particularly accents and authentic detailing, such as balconies and window trims. Policy LU 8.10 on all sides of the building require the incorporation of quality architectural design elements for all building facades and stepping back upper floors in order to reduce bulk and mass and to break up monotonous wall lines. Policy HOU 3.1 promote high-quality multifamily housing and mixed-use projects in the downtown area and along El Camino Real. The design responds to the form-based codes, aspects related to provision of landscaping, as well as provision of a prominent building entrance, transparent building openings, use of different materials on all sides of the building to further break up perceived bulk and high-quality building materials. The proposal is consistent with all applicable design review criteria. The applicant printed out eight-and-a-half-by-eleven sets of plans in November of 2013 with a cover letter that solicited comments from property owners and business owners immediately adjoining the property's boundaries. This outreach would not have reached all of the properties within a 300-foot radius. Eight forms were returned to the city and all looked upon the project favorably. The required public notice was advertised in the newspaper, posted onsite, and mailed to property owners within the 300-foot radius. The property owner from 1665 Laurel Street was in last week to review the plans. His concerns were water drainage from the roof onto his property, the potential need for him to have to extend his chimney up higher, blockage of his TV antenna, potential for his light and air to be blocked, parking for the commercial space, need for streetlights, need for security lighting and surveillance system, and the need for noise control and dampening. There should be a hard copy of a letter submitted from the property owner of 1724 Laurel Street requesting that the project be reduced to three stories and stating his concerns about Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission grant a conditional use permit and design review approval to allow for the construction of a new four-story mixed-use building at 1673 Laurel Street. And this is the formal motion, should you choose to make it, and I can take any questions that you may have of staff.
Thank you, Jill. Does anybody have any questions of Jill at this point or staff at this point?
Were the comments from the next-door neighbor ever addressed anywhere? So you said the concerns about security, the concerns about the chimney. Were those ever addressed?
No, because he came in last week, but I believe the applicant has drafted a set of responses to his comments and concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Any other questions for Jill at this point? Great. Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
for the project. Before I start, I would like to thank Lisa and Jill for all the time and effort they put into this application. When we first visited the site with the owner of the property, we felt that we really, really liked the street, that we wanted to do something special there, that we wanted to do something that was contextual but at the same time fun. There are a lot of contextual buildings. There are a lot of formula buildings that meet zoning requirements, but they're not necessarily that exciting or that interesting. We wanted to do something that did everything that zoning required but said, hey, this is San Carlos, this is Laurel Street. We want to do something special. So we took the basic idea of traditional building, which is tripartite elevations, bottom, middle, top, but worked them in such a way that each element within those facades could express itself, but that no other, no element would be too grandiose or too overpowering to take away from the main composition. So consequently, we have a ground level which has some porcelain tile on the walls. It has a really nice storefront, which is tall. City has a requirement for fairly tall commercial spaces. It has really well-organized and planned location for tenant signage so that there's something, that the graphics are well-coordinated, that the tenants cannot put up anything they want on the walls. When you get to the second, third, and third floors, they become an expression of the residential, and they kind of, each element says what it is. You know, the vertical element on the right is a stair. The middle element is the living room window with the ability to look out. And then, of course, the element to the left is horizontal and represents balconies. The top floors is set back, and set back considerably with a trellis to allow for some sun shading, but also because it gives the building a terminus. sun shading, but also because it gives the building a terminus, it gives a way of finishing it. The materials, we have two primary materials. We have plank, which is painted green, and that's in the background, and the stuff in front of it, the forms in front of it are light color, sort of a cream color, stucco, and they kind of play against it. And then, of course, we have special elements, which are the orange frame around the living room windows, the glass and metal rails, the perforated metal elements in some of the balconies and trellises. And I'll just quickly, I think Jill did such a good job that I'm not going to have to do very much. Where is the... Oh, right here, I'm sorry. That's the property. You can see the way the first floor is organized with ample space in front for street trees, I hope they're not going to be too close to each other, and commercial space, bike parking, accessible parking, and all the elements that are required by code. The units are pretty spacious. The owner insisted that he really didn't want people living in little shoeboxes. So the units are quite spacious, they have a lot of light and air, and they have a lot of windows. The units in the front have balconies and big windows with a lot of natural light. The rooms facing the courtyard also have the ability to get natural light, so it's never dark in the building. Again, the plans are similar for three levels, except that the fourth floor is significantly set back, as you can see here, 10, creates a very nice, large deck. We also eliminated the tower on the fourth floor, set it back as required so that we don't have a very strong vertical anymore the way we had in the original design. We also scalloped and designed the sidewalls to have a lot of activity, and every time there's a change in wall, there's also change in material and a change in color. Obviously, someday, as development continues, some of these walls may be covered, but at least while they're up, they're going to be interesting. That's the roof, where we have solar collectors, and that's the elevation. So with that, I would like to take just a couple of minutes to talk about the fact that this is a green building. All our work is very, very green, we believe in it. We're putting PVC membrane, which will be very reflective, what's known these days as a cool roof. We have solar collectors, we have high-quality double-glazed windows, we have insulation above Title 24, and we have submitted a Green Point rating, Green Point checklist. Even though it's not required, we submitted it, and we were also agreed for those areas where the parking was a little tight because of the size of the lot, we agreed to provide an electrical charger for electric cars as well as, you know, 28 additional points on the Green Point rating, which will bring us close to 100 or over 100. And just for those of you who are interested in the lingo, there is a system called LEED, which is very complex and takes forever to do, but LEED Silver is equivalent to 75 points, Green Point rating, and we're going above that, and we're definitely going above Title 24. We want to be a good neighbor, and I think we will be a good neighbor. I'd like to respond to the neighbor to the left had a question about us blocking light and air. We are not blocking any of his windows. We are building up against him, this is a lot-line situation, we're not blocking anything. His antenna is not impacted by us, nor is his chimney impacted by us. Our roof is internally drained, we have drains inside our roof that take the water out, we don't, our roof does not slope onto his roof. Lighten, as I said, I don't really see that our building will impact his, except that probably maybe he'll be encouraged to paint his building, improve the street. On the right side, I really feel that there's a reason why zoning allows a four-story. Most city commercial zones that are not high-rise, that are not made downtown are typically 40 feet high. This is permitted as long as the fourth floor is set back, and our fourth floor is appropriately set back. This building would not be feasible at three stories, it would only give us two stories of residential, and as it is, we're down to six units, which is, given the amount of money that has to be expended here, reducing the number of units is just not really feasible at all. It would kill the building to go three stories. I think that four stories is correct, the height is correct, the proportions are correct, and there's a four-story building across the street, I think there will be more. I appreciate that there's always some concern when a taller building comes up, but this building meets zoning on every level, and it has been recommended by a very good planning department that it should be approved. So I would like to simply state that we cannot reduce it to three stories. We would request your approval of the project as it is, as a four-story building with a four-story setback. I'm available for any questions you may have, thank you.
Stay up here really quickly, just let me ask if anybody here has any questions for the applicant at this point.
Just one quick question, on the parking situation, how do you guys propose, are those going to be assigned? I mean, you have three smaller spaces, five regular spaces, I mean, how is that going to work with the tenant mix that you have?
You mean, who gets the smaller space? Actually, I should ask the owner, I think it's a first-come, first-served situation, isn't it? I don't know, yeah. The difference is very small. It's really the lots now.
That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
Not at the moment.
No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is anybody from the public here to speak on this item? Item B, I don't have any slips. I do have the letter stating the concerns, which will be entered into the record, but okay, seeing nobody here to speak on the item, then we can go ahead and close public comment and deliberate, thank you.
Hold on, we got one.
Oh, we do, great.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to keep it really brief. So I'm talking on behalf of the owner here, just briefly to tell you that we've been in San Carlos for the past, I would say, 20 years, and we're always working to the best interest of the San Carlos and the progress and making it better, green. In fact, there are three buildings in San Carlos that we own at 1101, the Blue White Cleaners, 1161, and 1179. And have the, all the buildings actually have been, one of them has been awarded with the certification for green, for making the better improvement in the area in San Carlos community. So just want to encourage that we're for the best interests of the city, and if there's anything that was wrong with this, we would have followed it carefully and looked at it carefully, okay?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, great. Are there any other speakers or speaker cards out there before I close public comment? Okay, then we can go ahead and close public comment on this item, and do any of the commissioners have any comments about this project at this point?
Scott, I'll start with you.
Want to close public comment, or you want to talk about the project?
Yeah, we can, yeah, let's close public comment. Could somebody make a motion to do that?
Move to close public comment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are we closing the public hearing?
Just for this item.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Typically done before we deliberate.
No, no, it was the terminology, I was kind of confused, but it's...
Oh, sorry, I did kind of...
It's okay, it's not terribly important.
It's a common thing. All right, well, okay, deliberation on 1673. Any commissioners have any concerns or questions?
I mean, I was just kind of curious whether we had any response or whether Mr. Peck was questioned all about his statement about not receiving notice until March 27th. Apparently, there was notice that went out on November, and I don't, do we have any explanation as to why he might not have received notice? I was kind of hoping he was going to be here.
Mr. Hopps, Dr. Roney, I'm the owner of the property. I delivered all the paperwork to all the neighbors, not all, most of them around there, and I stopped by to office of the Mr. Gene Peck, and I left my business card with the paper. Unfortunately, I didn't get any answer. I left for Paul Nadler, Alex Leher, everybody around there, and some of them, they sent them back, and some of them, no, and he didn't call me back.
That was in November that you did that?
All of them in one day, yes.
Okay.
Was the original design four stories? Was it always four stories?
Always it was four.
Any other questions to the owner?
That's it for me.
Thank you for coming in. That's a little blip, but Scott?
I struggled with this a little bit, mainly for a couple of things. And most of it having to do with height, and, you know, the height and the appropriateness of the heights to the neighboring buildings, especially having a one-story building on one side and a two-story building on the other side. I kind of went back and forth thinking that, you know, there is a four-story building on the other side, down the street. Looking at this, I looked, and the actual property that's across the street is a parking lot, which means that you're going to have a four-story building essentially looking out into a single-family neighborhood. So I was wondering about the whole view impact, the same issue that we had for the three-story building down on Laurel Street where we required shrubs on the fourth floor to kind of mitigate sort of some of the issues. And so I guess the question I have for all of this is, I noticed there's a row of shrubs on the fourth floor, what is the height of those shrubs?
They're probably rail height.
They're rail height?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Were those your comments?
Those are kind of, yeah, those, that was...
I mean, what I was struck when I went and visited the site was if there was any place you were going to build a four-story building, this would be it. I mean, if you can see into the neighboring areas from that fourth floor, I mean, I suppose it's possible, but, I mean, that's a very well-wooded area, that neighborhood, I mean, I don't know, I don't see it, none of those neighbors are here, right? And they were noticed, I mean, so no one's really complaining about it. This is not the nicest-looking area of San Carlos, I think this building is going to be a nice improvement. So I don't have any problem with the height.
Jesse?
I have more problems with the parking than the height.
You're the parking guy.
I guess I am the parking guy, I guess, maybe I don't walk enough, which is actually true. So just a couple of quick questions from staff. The handicap accessible parking spot, how does that equate into the equation of one-and-a-half per unit, basically?
Excuse me, the way the ADA parking requirement is set into place is through the building code. So depending upon the number of parking spaces required, a certain percentage will be needed to be set aside as the ADA space. So it's of the total required, there's a certain number that are required to be ADA spaces.
What is it, 10% or...
Thank you, if you have that figure.
There is a chart in the code, but to get more than one, you have to have a fair number, I mean, anything up to, and don't quote me because I'd have to call my project manager on this, but anything up to, I don't know, 20, 30, something like that, is only one car. So even if you build only one unit, you have to do one. But once you get a higher than that, then it increases, you know, 50, like we're doing a 50-unit, and we have to provide three.
I assume the concern is that that spot is reserved for someone who is handicapped, and my assumption is that's not the case, you don't need a handicap placard in order to park in that space. It just needs to be available in the event that there's someone who needs it, right?
Correct. The way the law works, anybody can rent an apartment, and that apartment, if a person who is handicapped rents this apartment, these apartments are designed to be converted to accessibility requirements. In other words, we have all the radiuses, everything's set, but we're not going to lower the counters unless a handicapped person comes in and wants to rent. As far as, so if a person who is handicapped lives in the building, he uses that space. However, a person can have a friend come visit who is handicapped, and he should be able to, he or she should be able to use that space, otherwise, only handicapped people use it.
Oh, so it has to remain empty?
I don't exactly know, but my understanding is that a handicapped person should be able to use it. But it's within, it falls within the parking count of the entire building. That's my understanding.
It's not necessarily required to be empty, it's required to be available should there be a potential tenant that may need that space. So out of the number, whatever the parking requirement is, the building code is always going to give you, there's a formula, and you are correct, there is a chart, I can't remember the cutoff point, but up to a certain number you need to require, you're always going to need to require one, and then after you hit a certain number, a higher number, then it's, you know, two of the space, two of the required spaces need to be ADA. And again, you can't predict who will be potentially living in those spaces, but there be an ADA space available for a tenant should they need it.
For a tenant?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, the parking requirement is based on the residential uses, again, because the parking require, there is no parking requirement for a commercial space less than 1,500 square feet. So the parking formula is set based upon the number of units, so then it stands to reason those are unit spaces.
So if there are no ADA, if there are no ADA require, if there are no individuals that require the handicap parking, anyone can park in it?
I don't know the law exactly, but if, you know, the, obviously, the owner will know who the tenants are and what their needs are, and if one of them, if there is no one that is in need of an ADA space, it could be allowed where there's an additional space, you could just assign it to the tenant. But that's something that I would have to look into because, you know, that's, I'm just not familiar with that. But at what, the point at which the unit, the spaces would be assigned, you will know who your tenants are, I would assume.
Which gets back to my question about assigning of parking spots. So that would trigger off the assigning of parking spots, which is why I asked about assigning of parking spots.
And just as a reminder, I know the commission realizes, realizes there are six units, but nine spaces that are required. So it could be that, you know, not everyone will have a car. Again, we're in the mixed-use district, we're in an area where the parking requirement has been set to take into factors of those who, you know, desire to live downtown, and for, you know, some that may or may not have a car, may have one car only.
Okay. Jesse, further questions on parking for you? Or, I'm sorry, Scott?
How do we deal with the fact that there is a parking problem there already? Do we not even take that into consideration? Is that not a consideration? Is that not a consideration when we're looking at development?
You mean on that particular part of the wall?
On that particular area, there's a, there's a, just the parking is, is horrendous.
Yeah, hi there. Madam Chair, members of the commission. I mean, I think that, you know, first of all, you look at the, the zoning and whether the, um, the project conforms to your parking requirements. The broader public use of public parking spaces is the city's problem. Meaning, we have to come up with solutions to, if there is a parking problem, then the city needs to come up with better parking management. We need to look for other options to provide public parking, that kind of thing. As you know, there was a parking study that was completed in the last year, and there are some areas that, that in, during peak hours do reach a threshold, a high threshold of, of parking. But I wouldn't say that, that there's a severe parking problem in that area. Again, there's peak hours where, at lunch and dinner maybe, where, where you have problems in certain areas, but it hasn't reached that threshold. The next phase of the parking study is we're going to go forward to the city council with some ideas to improve parking, public parking along the Laurel corridor, the entire Laurel corridor.
Thank you, Al.
And through the chair, I would just also like to add, I confirmed with Jill that currently there is a curb cut in front of the vacant parcel, and when that becomes developed, that curb cut will be removed, and there would be the potential for up to three additional on-street parking spaces in the area where the curb cut previously was.
Okay. Thank you. Any of the commissioners have any further comments at this point? Okay. Um, my only comment would echo Davidson that I actually, I think particularly because it's on the east side of Laurel and surrounded by commercial, I do think this is one of the more appropriate places to put a four-story mixed-use building, and I think the design is excellent. So, having said that, I'd love to entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission approve the request for a conditional use permit and design review approval to allow for the construction of a new four-story mixed-use building at one-six-seven-three Laurel Street, APN colon zero-five-one-dash-three-seven-two-dash-two-six-zero, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and as conditioned in the conditional use permit code compliance certificate.
May I get a second? Or am?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Great. That was everybody, I believe? Thank you, everybody, very much for your comments and for your questions and concerns. Thank you very much.
No, no, I don't think so. Hey, look, it's fine. It's like, I think a lot of the concerns are more about this.
And what I'd like to do now, per our revised agenda, is move on to item C, which is seven-hundred Crestview Drive and three-three-seven-six, three-three-eight-four Melundy Drive, certification of mitigated negative declaration, and consideration for design review approval for a total proposed of new two, excuse me, two new water storage tanks for the California Water Service Company. Gavin? Thank you, Jill.
Good evening, Chair Harper Pedersen and members of the planning commission. My name is Gavin Monahan, and I will be taking you through the application of the California Water Service Company to install two new water storage tanks in the city of San Carlos. The two locations are at seven-hundred Crestview Drive, that's up at the corner of Crestview and Los Vientos, and it abuts the San Francisco Public Utilities Water Property up there. And the other tank location is at three-three-seven-six and three-three-eight-four Melundy Drive, which is the single-family residential neighborhood just across from Regent Court on Melundy. They're both primarily located in single-family neighborhoods. I'd like to provide a little background about the request. Cal Water first approached the city in the fall of two thousand and eleven with the request that they needed to increase the water storage capacity for the, for the city of San Carlos. The existing capacity was about four-point-five million, which was a four-point-two million gallon short of the recommended capacity of eight-point-seven million gallons. So, they're just roughly at half the recommended capacity for the city. So, with this deficit of four-point-two million, their goal was to, to look for their existing sites to install tanks. So, you'll see, as you drive around the city, specifically these two sites, but other Cal Water sites were designed originally with pad locations for one, two, or three tanks. In this case, both of these locations were designed with pads for two tanks, and in the nineteen-sixties, only one tank was installed at each site. So, there's existing areas that were never landscaped, they're actually kept free of weeds and debris and, and plant material, there's, most of them have like a gravel surface on them, and you'll, if you'll see them from an aerial view on Google Earth or in the staff report, and in some of the environmental documents provided to you tonight, you'll see that they have these fifty-foot radius pads that are existing there and ready for a new tank. So, that's a little background about the history of the project. It first came in to staff within, with a design of steel tanks. So, the existing tanks on both sites are steel, and Cal Water came forward with the idea to put two new steel tanks, and that's what was on the sites, and they were gonna mimic those. Changes in, changes in the requirements for the design of tanks, which are legislated by other entities, required a new design for steel tanks. So, the nineteen-sixty-three steel tank had one design, the two thousand and eleven steel tank would need a new design. So, Cal Water came forward with that idea to mimic this deal and use that. But unfortunately, in order to do that, a current, or a new steel tank has to have less, more freeboard, so that's more space between the top of the water and the top of the tank for sloshing. So, the old tanks were under an old code, they were allowed to have less. New tanks, going forward from two thousand and eleven onward, two thousand and ten onward, were required to have more freeboard, it's called, this is the space. But the tanks need to equalize. They need to be at the same level because they communicate together, that's the way they work when there's two tanks at a site, they are basically, they're like twins, and they need to be able to equalize water from one tank, go to the next, and vice versa. It's a gravity system, it's not a pressurized pump system like you'd have in the flatlands. So, it's important for the tanks to communicate. So, Cal Water's original idea was design a new, I would say first of its ever, and I will let their engineer correct me if I'm wrong, steel tank under the new guidelines that would allow the same freeboard as an old steel tank, which was quite complex and somewhat convoluted. So, as the process went forward, they inevitably came back to us with a new design, which would be a poured concrete tank. So, that's what we're gonna discuss tonight, but I wanted to give you some of the background. So, during the review of the original steel tanks, the project got just up until the ten-day notice for the planning commission, we actually had issued the notice, and we had a planning commission date set on the calendar, and we received on, actually, the day of the planning commission hearing, received a couple of neighbors, neighborhood comment letters from the uphill neighbors, so the day of the meeting. So, because they had not been addressed, and the, the applicants had not responded to the outreach that Cal Water had done, we had done a, we'd asked them to do a site, open house site, day at the Melundy site, an open house site tour at the Crestview site, and then also a public outreach meeting here at City Hall. The two neighbors had not participated in any of those events, but staff felt it best to let some time pass and let Cal Water address their concerns and take it back to a, take it to a date uncertain, to a future planning commission meeting. During that time, Cal Water decided that it was, made more sense to, to propose the concrete tanks, which have a similar, similar freeboard on a new, modern concrete tank as the old steel tanks, thus getting rid of that requirement for them to engineer these, these site-specific, one-of-a-kind tanks for San Carlos, which would have been quite expensive. So, that brings us to the tonight's application, which is for two new poured concrete, reinforced concrete water storage tanks. So, I'm gonna take it from there, but that's the background of the history of the, of the requests in front of you tonight. So, the two sites, as I mentioned, were, for the most part, surrounded by single-family residential. The first site here is seven-hundred Crestview Drive, this is our R-three, it's our lower-density residential, the three stands for a net of three, single-family homes per acre. So, this is the image here, an aerial view of Crestview and Los Vientos, and this SFPUC water property is just up there in the upper left-hand corner of the screen. And then around it are Lewis Ranch Road, Crestview Drive, and Los Vientos Way. So, this is the site at seven-hundred Crestview. It's approximately a half an acre, it has an existing tank on it, and it's zoned single-family and also the general plan designation for it is single-family. This is a picture of the site plan here, it's a little bit faded out on the overhead, but it's also included in your packet. The existing tank is, if I can get the cursor to show, the existing tank is here on the right, so it's on the corner, it's fairly well-screened with existing vegetation, and the proposed tank would go in this location here, which, if you see from a, from the aerial view, is, actually even has concentric rings, it has not been landscaped and has been set aside by Cal Water for future expansion. There is a county communications facility here, there's also a backup propane facility here for the county comm, and that will be slid over, out of the way to make room for the tank. That's really the only change that this particular site needs. There is a lot of vegetation here, there's quite a nice screening between the Cal Water site and the first single-family home here, to, which would be the top of the screen, and same on this site here, on the left-hand side. They are proposing to put one additional tree in on this site. The site at, on Melundy Drive, again, is very similar, has an existing steel tank, and then again, a pad just to the right there, the upper right-hand side there, that would accommodate the new proposed tank. It's just a little bit over a third of an acre, it's zoned RS-six, which is our standard single-family zoning designation, and the general plan designation for this site is also single-family. So, the uphill neighbors I talk about are this house here, and then the house here, so one-twenty-five and one-thirty-three Coventry. They are uphill about twenty-five feet, so just a little bit less than the top of the tank, and I'll show you some pictures a little bit later on about how that comes into play. These aerial views do, definitely do not show topography real well. And then again, it's surrounded by single-family homes and quite a bit of vegetation. Here is an actual site plan provided by Cal Water, this shows some of the mitigation landscaping that's proposed for trees. Over here, there are some kind of less desirable trees that have gotten somewhat thin over the years, and are probably reaching the end of their, their, their normal lifespan. They will be removed with new trees replaced, and this was done in, with consultation and agree, and approval of the, the uphill neighbor that would like to have some screening between the new proposed tank and the view that they have out of their backyard. And then, some additional trees will go in here. There's also, the other uphill neighbor that had concerns is here, and there is a large tree here that we can have Cal Water remove, which will actually open their view shed on one section, they have a big tree, and the area where the tank goes, they would like to put a fence and a trellis to screen the view, and I can show you those pictures a little bit later. So, those are the basic descriptions of the site. The project description for the two tanks, the data is on the screen there for you to look at. The first site, six, seven-hundred Crestview Drive gets a four-hundred-and-ten-thousand-gallon tank, and they're very similar, it's about twenty-nine feet in height, fifty feet in diameter. And the site on Melundy gets a four-hundred-thousand-gallon tank, that's thirty feet in height and forty-eight feet in diameter, so a little bit smaller diameter and a foot taller. They're both painted grouse tan. I gave Chair Harper Pedersen the colors, if she would like to look at them, they don't reproduce well, so I wanted to provide you with the color chips to take a look at. This is a elevation drawing, this is a street view to take a look at that proposal on Crestview. There is this county communications facility here in the back, there's a proposed new tree for here, and there's quite a bit of existing landscaping on the site. And then this is a street view from Melundy Drive, looking from approximately Regent Court across the street to the existing tank and then the proposed concrete tank. And there's quite a bit of landscaping on this site as well. Some comment, one comment letter we got from an uphill neighbor, and comments we had earlier in the process under the original submittal were about the conditions of the site, maintaining that there weren't weeds and that trees with dead limbs were trimmed back. Cal Water's committed to doing that, removing limbs from dead trees, replacing trees that need to be replaced with appropriate ones that are drought-tolerant, and also work to screen the tanks. But through quite a bit of analysis and looking at the project, talking with neighbors, talking, speaking with staff and with Cal Water, there is, I think, a benefit to leaving the sites somewhat rustic with the treescape, instead of having the more manicured landscaping that you'd see in a single-family neighborhood, somebody asked for that, why is the landscaping not similar to what you'd have in a single-family home? And actually, if you're driving around San Carlos, you'll notice oftentimes you go by a Cal Water site that has tanks on it, there's some over by, as you approach Belmont, there's several up in the hills. And there's many of the sites you can drive by and you don't even notice they're there because the trees have kind of grown up, they look natural. In this case, the seven-hundred Crestview site looks similar to the property across the street on Lewis Ranch Road, and also some of the natural trees that grow in the SFPUC properties. So, as opposed to having a manicured site where the trees are really cut back, you would then definitely see the trees, you'd look under the canopy of the trees if they were limbed up like you'd see in a single-family neighborhood. But instead of having the fuller, thicker trees, even some that may have a dead branch or whatnot, they be, they create a much more natural setting, which helps defer your eye to some other thing on the street opposed to looking at the, the steel or concrete, poured concrete water tanks. So, there's a benefit to that. And again, both of the sites have significant mature tree landscaping that would be, majority of it would be left intact. So, the proposal, the existing tanks are steel, the proposal is for poured concrete. It's actually at several phases, and I will let Cal Water's engineer here describe it, but they pour, basically pour a pad for the tank, and then they pour the outside shell for it. It gets capped with a concrete cap, it has some framing inside that holds this all together. And then the outside of it, they have this really cool process where the entire tank gets wrapped with steel cables, with this robotic machine that literally encircles the tank like a spiral, and it clamps on and does this, it does this really neat circular motion around the tank from the bottom to the top. And then the steel cables are covered with a high-strength shotcrete, it's a concrete that's made with very little water in it, so it has a very high strength, and it cures quicker. And so, the entire tank is then flocked with this shotcrete, so you don't see any of the steel, the steel cables are encapsulated inside the tank, and it creates a very, very strong structure. The benefit also from going from steel to concrete, there's some changes in the environmental document based on how you build them, whether you're gonna have hot work, which is welding, and torches, and bringing steel panels in, which can be kind of noisy, to poured concrete, which requires the trucks to come, batching trucks that need to come in sequence and pour monolithically at the same time. So, there were some changes in environmental document to that. But one of the benefits is the aesthetic of the concrete tanks is a softer, more natural look, it doesn't have that reflectivity of metal, and also doesn't make the sound that a metal tank would make while you're constructing it or if you were to wrap on it with something. The concrete is dead quiet because there's no sound transmission through it whatsoever. So, there are actually benefits for the, for the city to have, Cal Water to have them decide to switch with a different material for the actual tank construction. And this is a tank at Mirror Beach. It's a little bit smaller, it's not fifty by twenty-nine, but it's a good representation of the proposal, how that would look. So, one of the requirements that we had was to review this pursuant to the requirements of SEQA. It was not an exempt project, so we did an initial study and then created a draft mitigated NECD, that was circulated for thirty days, as is required. And through that circulation, Cal Water received, we received one through the, through the channel comment, Cal Water received a comment from a resident with a recommendation that no tanks go at Melundy and either more tanks go at Crestview or a larger tank could go at Crestview. Planning staff did not receive the comment, it came through email to Cal Water staff, and we never received it as a formal comment, but I share it with you tonight, and Cal Water staff did address the app, the commenter, the resident. And then we also received a follow-up comment letter from an uphill neighbor that's in the packet. And this is one of the individuals who's addressed in the actual site plans, you'll see that there are mitigation measures taken to help address the neighbor's concerns. Cal Water has worked with the two neighbors that are on Coventry Court, one-thirty-three and one-twenty-five, specific to address their concerns. SEQA requires us to mitigate impacts to aesthetics when there is a scenic vista that's impacted, but it defines that as a public vista. So, as you can imagine, if any type of change of a, of an aesthetic or a private vista was an impact under SEQA, we would have all types of projects that would not be allowed or require significant mitigation just from home to home or from small project to small project. So, the definition under the California Environmental Quality Act is for this public vista, so you're gonna block something that's a view of the bay by the public, like for instance, at one of the parks that are up on Crestview. But in this case, Cal Water reached out to the applicant, to the neighbors, and, and worked with them to come up with some ideas and some plans that would help mitigate private residences. It's included in the staff report, it's also included in the environmental document, and the firm that prepared the environmental document also described the findings of SEQA and the requirements for us, really to only have to address those significant public impacts. But Cal Water is not stopped from, from reaching out and doing more for the neighbors, they certainly can do that. They can, they can plant more trees for the neighbors than we require as a city, they can address fencing and view sheds for neighbors that is not necessarily a requirement of San Carlos or of SEQA. And in this case, they've done that, and they've worked individually with both of the property owners. We've captured that in the documents that you have in front of you tonight for approval by showing the site plans with some of the mitigation measures, and then the full description in the staff report. So, some of the items that came up, so when the initial study mitigated NECD was completed, and potential impacts, these are standard for environmental review, to air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, and noise. So, as you can imagine, these all have to be, in order to be a mitigated NECD, they have to be able to be mitigated to a point that is less than significant. So, if you can't mitigate them, the noise is gonna be ongoing and not mitigatable, it's not something that can be handled under an ISM and D, it would then require an environmental impact report. But in this case, things like air quality, one of the concerns is you'd have dust or airborne particulates coming up through construction, so a mitigation measure would be to water the site twice a day or as, or more frequently as needed in order to keep the dust particles down. Noise, there are types of construction equipment that can make noise, so a mitigation factor is talking about not allowing trucks or equipment to idle and requiring them to be in conformance with California regulations for noise emitting equipment and whatnot, and throughout the list. So, the mitigated NECD has a list of these basic seven areas that they found a potential for an impact, and then also the mitigation that's proposed that would then reduce it to less than significant. And the proposal in front of you tonight does that. So, there are required findings for, SEQA, there are required findings for design review, so the tanks are in front of you tonight for design review, and they're also in front of you to certify the environmental document, which in this case is a mitigated NECD. So, I have summarized the findings here, they are A through D. They are A through D. There are four. And they are that the project can be mitigated to less than significant, excuse me, the project does not compromise a long-term environmental goal and achieve some type of short-term thing. The impacts for the proposed project are individually limited and not cumulatively considerable. And finally, the project would not result in substantial adverse environmental effects that would cause substantial or direct adverse effect on human beings. So in this case, the proposal in front of you would not do any of these four. There are also four findings for design review, and I have them listed here. The staff report includes the four findings for SEQA, the four findings for design review, and then also staff's response, showing how the proposal in front of you meets or exceeds those required findings. So staff is recommending approval of the mitigated NEGDEC and then also approval of the designer view aspect for the tanks. There's a code compliance certificate in your packet. That is the approval document. So should you want to add something tonight, that would be the document. You could add a comment or a suggestion, recommendation, or something that you thought would help with the project, as sometimes happens with these projects. There's also a resolution, which is for the environmental document. There's a number of attachments, including the geotechnical report that was done that would help address this concern up here, which was hydrology, water quality and geology and soils. It was peer-reviewed by an outside company for its efficacy, and it's included in the staff report packet for you tonight. I have another section here. I don't know if you want to stop me and talk about this, but I can show you some of the photo simulations. One of your attachments is the photo sims. So Cal Water had, went out and got a third-party firm to do a photo simulation to show the tanks. They started off by raising a flag up and taking pictures and then superimposing the size of their proposed tank in those locations. And those are in your staff report. I'll show you a couple of them here. So this is the tank at Melundy, the proposed tank at Melundy, and the two homes above on Coventry Court. You can see the lettering out here. So this is actually a view from an upper-floor window. This was in the ISM and D. And then, we're going to actually take you down, this is a two-story house, down to their pool level. So the existing tank is over here, tucked behind this tree. This is at ground level with the existing tanks here. You can see sort of the tan and the proposed tank here. So it's just a little bit above fence level in their backyard. And this particular family wanted a fence and a trellis, so they worked with Cal Water to propose this, which completely blocks the view. This tree here could be proposed to be removed. It actually helps increase their view, and it's very woody and it's not a bay or an oak or a laurel.
And are those the people at 133 Coventry Court?
Yes.
So do you have an...
Oh, this, I'm sorry. This is 125. I'll show you 133 next. So 133, this is the view in their backyard. So if you're standing in someone's backyard, this is not the direct view out. So you're not looking perpendicular to the rear property line. You're looking off to the right, somewhat towards the tank. You can generally see it. There's this wall somewhat curvilinear, but around here, it's about straight. So the straight view out of their property is this direction here. The proposed tank, the tanks are over here, and I'll show you. This is the proposal. These are the existing trees. They don't provide a lot. They actually look better in this picture, which is unusual, than they actually are. They're quite kind of woody and dead in here. And the proposal would be to remove these ones that are along the side property line at Cal Water property and replace them with some trees that have a limited height that could grow up and help screen the tanks, but not necessarily grow up and block this view here, which I think is about Los Altos Hills or something like that. As you can see, I'm happy to scroll back and forth through them several times if you want to have a conversation about them. And the existing tank top is here. Especially with this property here, there are other view sheds. Certainly, as you know, those commissioners that have been on the residential designer view committee, there's a view out of the backyard from a variety of different ways. And sometimes, the impact is significant and it's right out the back and it blocks quite a bit of the view. Other times, it blocks a portion of the view and then it becomes subjective of the which part of the view. So we have oftentimes, in San Carlos, talked about views to the bay or the western hills. In this case, the bay is really over here. It's really off the screen. So what the view here would be into this Redwood City-Atherton area and then the western hills off to the right.
So these are the folks who wrote the letter who complained that...
Yes, a Sony letter that's in the current packet.
And they're saying that there's, where's the chain link fence that they're talking about?
Those are on, I will take you back. The chain link fence is down, it's right along here. And it's, yeah, it's on the front.
So what they're wanting is a new fence along the front?
Oh, so that's a good question. So they actually want a fence around, I'll show you where this is. They actually would like a fence back here. So the fence from some vantage point, if you were standing up on their property looking down, you could see it, but we have a limit of fence height. We can allow a special fence exception for different zoning districts, and I think we could make the argument that a tank site is different than a single-family, even though technically underlying zoning, but there's a different type of use. But there is a limit to fence height. At some point, at 10, 12, 16 feet, they become unmanageable to even anchor in the ground because of wind loads. And then, they'd create a negative aesthetic from some other angle, from some other property owner from down below, potentially like on Regent Court, would be looking behind a tank and seeing a fence that was excessively high. So in order to screen a 29-foot tank with a fence, you have to have quite a tall fence. So it's really more appropriate to use a combination of fencing and trees. I know that there were comments, and I'm not sure, I think that they probably were also referencing the front fences as well that are right along here. This is the one on Melundy. And they have a cyclone fence that's original from the 1960s, and it's a security fence to keep water, people out of water tank sites. I mean, it's an important commodity. They're not nearly as protected as one might imagine. The water tanks are open for venting, so it's really important for Cal Water to keep the property's fence, to keep vandalism out and to keep anything from happening to the city's water supply.
Does anybody have any other questions for Gavin at this point? I know that was a lot of information, and those were great questions.
So are we removing four or five trees? Because in the staff report, I actually saw four mentioned at least once and...
So there's one extra tree here that could come out that if the Lips family that lives back here, if that was a desire, then to remove the tree. So the tree removals, they are, we like to have them numerically correct, but they are a bit of an art. At times, on a hillside like back here, this is a sloped hillside, five, and you'll see I put a range of tree sizes on purpose. Five 24-inch box trees may not go in so well there. The box trees are pretty big, and on a hillside, they're hard to get in the ground and get them to root because one side's out of the ground, one side's not. So in this case, we want the flexibility to say that Cal Water might put in seven or eight 15-gallon trees or some other size. They might put in a larger tree here, so we allow that flexibility.
Because I want to give you that flexibility, but it looks like you've mentioned putting in eight trees.
Yes.
And there's eight right there.
Yes.
So that doesn't take into consideration the one on the other side over there.
Well, they don't want that replaced because that would be, that would be a trade-off. So we're going to put a tank in, and as a trade-off, we can remove this tree that's blocking your view.
Okay, so that one's not, okay.
Yeah, and we have a finding for that type of tree removal. So at that point, if that tree comes out, it can come in as a separate application. It's not, it's not...
Tied to the tank.
Yeah, it's not necessarily incumbent upon us to remove that tree with this particular staff report, even with this ISM and D. And that's a staff-level project that we would deal. We do have a finding that's for a greater use of the property, economic or other use of the property, which would certainly be an argument that could be made for removing a tree that's blocking a view, especially when a new tank is going to be taking up part of the rest of the view shed from our particular yard.
Can you go back to that diagram of 133?
The view, the photo sims?
Yeah. Okay, so in the packet, that's described as 135, not 133. Is that just a mistake?
Let me get my packet out.
It does say 135, yeah.
If you look at, at the revised initial study, draft mitigated negative declaration...
What, tell me which page you're on.
Page 21. And I'm not just worried about the typo, although worried is probably, actually, there's more content to my question. But first, I kind of just want to figure out what's going on, and I'll explain to you why I'm confused in a second.
So the address of the Asanis is 133. That is correct. This, let me go back to the page in the ISM and D.
It's the same picture.
Yeah. No, it is 133.
So when you look at the, when you, now if you turn to 17...
Page 17?
Page 17. Again, it's talking about 135. And again, I'm assuming that's a typo, and it should be 133. But when it talks about the mitigation, it's talking about installing a six-foot wooden fence with lattice. Which is what in the letter they're saying they actually want, but what the pictures indicate they're not getting. So I'm just like, I'm getting really confused.
Sure. The six-foot, so on this hillside here, a six-foot fence with lattice would not show up around this take.
Get it. Totally understand what you're saying, but the negative deck document says it's going in, and they're saying they want it. So I'm just confused. I mean, it's like the environmental document says it's going to happen, although it seems like it says it's going to happen on the wrong property. The presentation says it's not going to happen. So I'm just, if you look at page 17, when it talks about, well, it says 135 Coventry, but presumably it means 133 Coventry, it talks about putting in fence.
Yes.
But you're saying they're not going to put in a fence.
No, no, they are.
Or does it mean 125?
It might be 125 instead of 135.
If it meant 125 instead of 135, then it would make sense.
It's happening at 125. There is a new fence.
They talk about 125 in the earlier paragraph.
They both get fences. 125 gets this fence.
Okay.
133 would like fencing around the tank, but because you're seeing the top, in this picture, you're seeing the top of a 30-foot tank. This is about 15 feet, and down here would be the top of maybe a seven-foot fence. So...
So are they getting, I mean...
Yes, they're both getting, they're both getting...
They're both getting a fence. It's just not in the picture and it's not going to do what they want.
Yeah, you can't see it. That's, yeah, you can't see the fence from, this is a photo simulation, so it's not viewable from...
I'm not being critical at all. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand.
Yes, absolutely. No, I mean, because of the height of this tank, the fence, I mean, if we, you'd have to do maybe a cutaway drawing that removes some of this vegetation to show where it is, but no, a six-foot fence with a foot of lattice would not show up in this picture.
Does it matter that the environmental document has the wrong address?
So I can, I can tell you why I believe that's the case. These photo sims here, this font here, I believe, was lifted off of a packet from the photo sims, from the firm that did the photo sims. It's not from our consultant's document, and that is my guess as to why it says 135
I don't understand.
So I think that the firm that typed in the captions for the photos from the photo sims used that, yeah, used the wrong...
But it is 133.
It is 133 is the correct address.
But the, I think what you're saying is...
But the environmental document says 135.
Negative deck also says...
On page 21.
On page 17.
Page 17 is viewpoint three, figure 11, in describing the figure, it says 135.
Let me see. No, because one of them's not on, the Cal Water property, so it's not on the site plan.
Sorry, I just didn't notice this until I was comparing the letter to the environmental document. And it was triggered when you told me that you weren't building, there wasn't going to be a fence built, and then I saw that they wanted a fence built, and then I looked at the environmental document and I, and environmental document indicated that it was building a fence, except the address seems to be wrong. Otherwise, I would have spotted the issue sooner.
Yeah, no, it should be 133 Coventry.
On page 17?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that matter? Do we have to modify that in some way when we make our motions? Does it matter?
Well, in the...
I'm also just concerned because, I mean, again, I'm not criticizing, but when you described the presentation, you made it seem like there's not going to be a fence when it appears that there is going to be a fence.
No, I think he did say, he said there was going to be a fence, it just wasn't visible.
Yeah, no, there's always been a fence, yeah.
So then, Gavin or Lisa, would we need to do anything different to approve the negative deck, just with, with changing address?
We can write changes into that document?
Right, and you can also add, we can clarify that as part of the code compliance certificate.
Okay. No, I didn't even notice.
Good catch.
My brain just went right over that address.
Gavin, one more question. Do we know when this is going to be done and will it impact, will it be done at a point that will impact the commute to schools in the morning?
That is a good question. I know that their timeline is shorter now, only because the process has been going on since 2011. The engineer from Cal Water is here tonight, so I might have her talk a little bit about the construction timeline. I generally know how long it is just once it gets started, the months for each phase. But when they will actually break ground, I'm not quite certain. I think potentially later this summer, they need to avoid our grading moratorium. And then, because they're going to have a specified tank contractor come out, they will do these in phases. So there's a crew that comes out and does the part A at one side and then moves to part, to the next tank, and then they start part B, and then that moves to the next tank so they can have the same crews out. So Susan Liu from Cal Water is here tonight, and I will let her describe some of those technical things of when they may get started with the project.
Okay.
Any other questions for Gavin before we bring Susan or the applicant up?
Got one more.
One more? Okay, go ahead, Scott.
So this is probably the third or fourth Cal Water site that I've seen as a member of the commission. And each time, I hear the words poorly maintained. And I'm just wondering, is there anything we can do about this to actually get these sites maintained? Because every time I hear about the Cal Water sites, I hear the words poorly maintained. Whether it be garbage and whether it's the effect of the cell towers or whether it's the Cal Water site itself, how do we go about making sure that, you know, Cal Water cleans up all the sites in town so that the next time we see one of these, I don't hear the words poorly maintained?
So, I mean, that is a really good question. We have, and I agree with you, I've heard that before, when we've had problems with concerns with the cell phone towers going in. But we have not ever received, that I know of, outside of an application for a cell tower or for the new water tanks, a complaint through code enforcement to clean them up. Now, I don't receive all those calls, but I am in the same office. So I think that triggering of a new project oftentimes creates a more critical view of the site, whether it's on Laurel Street or on Melundy or Crestview because of new water tanks going in. One of the things that I picked up, just my ear picked up, was the confusion or the concern of residents that the sites did not look like single-family sites. They weren't landscaped with boxwood, grass, mulch, those types of things. They looked, they are dissimilar in appearance to a single-family house. And I think that goes back to my earlier discussion. If the sites become too manicured, so I mean, on a tree in your front yard, you limb it up, so you remove all the dead limbs up to yay-high so you can see your front door and front door, and walk under it, and it's, it's quite aesthetic. If you limb up all of these trees, you then, when you're out walking on these two sites with your dog or with your kids, you're gonna see right through that understory to the tanks, which include pump house equipment, overflow devices, utility poles, I mean, there's other things that are on these Cal Water sites. So I think that might be one of the explanations. I know that Cal Water was, reacted when they got the initial comments a couple of years ago, that there was, the site was not maintained, and I know they sent their crew out for weed whacking and clearing limbs and things of that nature. I've been to both sites, I would describe them as rustic, but not poorly maintained. I didn't see any trash or bottles, I mean, perforated fences collect things, as you know, if you have a front yard, if the wind comes up, you can get a paper bag or a, you know, junk mail or whatever stuck to the fence. I don't think that's uncommon, but I did not see anything that would create a code enforcement case, or anything that would make me as a planner want Cal Water to come out and do a bunch of more limbing on trees, or a bunch of removal. I do know that they will do quite a bit of work to the Melody site when the tank goes in, because of the tree removals, and the replanting, and the sensitivity of the residents that had more concerns. We did not hear, receive any comments from the Crestview site.
Okay.
None.
Great. Thank you, Gavin.
You're welcome.
And then I understand the applicant is here, is it Susan? Hi, please come on up.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Susan Liu, I'm with Cal Water. I'm the project engineer on this, on the two tank projects in San Carlos. So I believe Gavin brought up the question of construction. I don't know if, if you guys wanted to, wanted me to elaborate on what the construction process is gonna look like, or do you wanna just skip straight to the, the schedule or timeline?
Does anybody have any questions on construction?
No.
Okay, then, then let's go ahead and move on to timeline.
Okay, thank you.
So as far as the schedule, depending on how long the building permit takes, we're not expecting to break ground until early next year, and will definitely comply to any city noise ordinances, or, you know, anything like that. For the construction schedule, our tank contractor, I believe, proposed about a three-month period between both tanks, and like Gavin mentioned earlier, they're gonna start at one, one station first, do a couple of phases and setups, and then move to the second one, and then finish, kind of wrap up both stations at the same time. So let me just sift through their proposed schedule for, for some more information.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
If, if we put a condition in that essentially said you couldn't start construction before, say, eight-thirty in the morning, would that be an undue hardship for you?
Oh, no, yeah, that would be...
I'm just, I'm thinking...
Perfectly normal.
All the kids going to school, driving down the street, you know, anything, an eight-thirty start for anything that requires staging of vehicles, how about that? So if you're continually having a certain number of vehicles come in on a regular basis, that, that would be the concern for impacting traffic.
And then I, I would guess the same for the afternoon also?
The afternoon is less of a problem.
Oh, okay.
It's really, the, the morning is the issue, because everybody's trying to get there at a certain time. In the afternoon, it's much more spread out. And, and so we've had issues in other locations where we've just said, you know, we're gonna shift, start after a certain time, or find a way to be sensitive to the, the individuals trying to get to the schools.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem at all.
Does anybody else have any questions for Susan or applicant?
She was, no, she was still going through the...
No, did you have anything else you wanted to share with us?
Um, as far as the tank project, I think Gavin did a good job describing it. I did wanna point out that it's, it's really difficult to see in this visual simulation, but the top of the lattice fence does show up if you, I guess it's kinda hard to describe if I can go over and point, but there's...
Yeah, no, please.
Oh, here we go.
Oh, so that is a...
Yeah. If you go back to the other photo, there's no...
Ah.
That's...
I don't know what it really does, but, okay.
They also wanted to do the fence perpendicular to the property, too, if it goes down, but...
Yeah. Yeah, so we can, you know, if, if we, I know that the district has plans for possibly replacing the fencing there. There's chain link fence all, on all four sides, so, you know, it'd be a good opportunity for us to look at possibly replacing that, or upgrading the rest of our fencing also. Our chain link fence, we do have one, not just on the street, but like I said, on all four sides of the property. So it'd be difficult to see on this joint, or this photo, but that's also there.
Great.
Yeah. And then we do have our superintendent in the area, I don't know if you have any maintenance questions for him, but we do have a regular gardener or landscape person that tends our sites, so we can talk more about that. I know that the residences that reached out to us, we did provide them with our direct numbers, in case there's any nuances or anything that they can, you know, directly contact us, so that we can call someone else immediately to, to fix whatever needed to be fixed.
Great. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent? No? Okay, thank you for having him here, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Great, now that we've heard from the applicant, is there anybody in the public who wishes to speak on this item? I don't have any speaker cards on this item. Okay, seeing nobody, then we'll go ahead and move on.
So does anybody have an objection to putting in a little clause that essentially asks them to work with city staff to address potential impacts to school traffic?
Not at all.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And leave it up to staff to figure that out?
And then my only other question about conditions was, the applicant mentioned upgrading the surrounding fences. Does anybody have any desire to codify that?
I don't think we need to require them. I think that that's something that...
Okay, great, then no need to add it. All right, does anybody else have any other comments or concerns from, okay, great, I'd love to entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commission certify a mitigated negative declaration and approve the request for design review approval for Cal Water to install one new water storage tank at seven hundred Crestview Drive, and one new water storage tank at three-three-seven-six and three-three-eight-four Melody Drive, based on the required findings and for the reasons outlined in the staff report. With the, the addition by Scott Marsters, that the, the applicant work with the city to resolve any concerns there might be regarding traffic problems that might be caused by construction.
Great, may I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Okay. Thank you. Now, moving on to the last item in our public hearing, is the consideration for the zoning ordinance amendments to the San Carlos zoning ordinance, Title eighteen, San Carlos Municipal Code, consisting of correction, clarification, minor improvements to both land use regulations and development standards, continued from our last meeting on March seventeenth. Hi, Lisa.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lisa Porres, Principal Planner, and the item before you tonight is a continuation from the discussion on March seventeenth. This is a proposal or recommendation to make amendments to the City of San Carlos zoning ordinance, and as we discussed last time, bringing forth the proposed amendments are in an effort to correct, clarify, and improve upon the zoning ordinance that was adopted in two thousand and twelve. At the previous hearing, the commission was presented with over fifty different proposed modifications to the zoning ordinance, and at the conclusion of that presentation, there were ten items that the commission requested staff to look further into. These ten items are noted and discussed in your staff report, and also I'd like to mention that the exhibits to the resolution, exhibit A, B, C, and D, include all of the proposed modifications, with the addition of having the planning commission's input and direction reflected in yellow highlighting. So if you've noticed through the exhibit, anywhere there is a yellow highlight, that is based upon some of the direction we received at the last hearing. So I guess what I will do is just walk you through the mod, the additional items that we wanted to follow up on with the commission. And the first one had to do with transitional and supportive housing. There was a few questions on that item, as far as if there are any regulations that could be placed on those types of uses. So staff did additional research, we reached out to our city attorney, and we verified that indeed, the state does not allow operational limitations to be placed on these types of uses, and in fact, they needed to be treated exactly the same as residential. One thing I will point out is that in our zoning ordinance, under an area in the zoning ordinance that has regulations for specific uses, there is language in there already under section eighteen-twenty-three-two-five-zero. This is listed at the top of page five of the staff report, where it states that there are no restrictions that can be applied to these types of residential uses. I would like to note that staff did confer with a building official, I think there were some questions as far as how many individuals could live in these types of units, so the building code already has regulations for addressing overcrowding in units, so whatever type of units that could be proposed in the future, they would still, you know, they would be subject to the building code requirements for overcrowding, to address those concerns. The next item that the planning commission asked staff to look into had to do with cottage food operations. We talked about this last time, whereby, under a cottage food operation, an operator may choose to not have an employee, they may also choose to not provide direct onsite sales of their product, and in that particular situation, staff is recommending that they be permitted by right, just like a home occupation. It's the area of food, cottage food operations where an operator may choose to have an outside employee and have direct sales onsite. There are questions, well, how would we, how might we wanna treat that particular type of cottage food operation? So staff did additional research, we also looked at what other cities do, and in fact, found that there are several different items that we could address for a cottage food operation, wanting to have an outside employee, and wanting to have direct sales onsite. On page five of the staff report, it lists a number of standards that would be imposed for that type of cottage food operation, and in addition to that, several findings that would be made through a use permit to be acted upon by the zoning administrator. So as you can see on page five, it indicates that one way to address people coming to the site and having an additional employee onsite, would be to require that all required parking spaces are used for parking. Sometimes folks choose to use their parking garages for something else. But if you're going to be a cottage food operator, one of the requirements is that the parking, the garage space is used for parking, you know, to help get cars on the site. The other item that I'd like to note is, has to do with the number of persons onsite at any given time. This is a last bullet on page five. Customer visits shall be limited to no more than four persons at any given time, or twenty persons in any given twenty-four hour period. This just puts the cottage food operator on notice that, you know, we don't wanna have a lot of people coming to the site all at once, that there needs to be some degree of management, and the allowance for a reasonable number of people on the site, if you're choosing, again, to have direct sales onsite. There is additional items in here, I won't go through each and every one, but I wanted to point that out to the commission, that these are some, a good start to some standards that we can impose upon cottage food operators, and with the addition of two findings, as I mentioned before. If you have any questions on these, we can, you know, after I get through with my presentation, we can discuss these more thoroughly. The next item is parking requirements for outdoor dining areas. There is a request by the commission on what, how we would treat large areas of outdoor dining, where we presently do not require parking for. In our zoning, zoning ordinance, in the mixed-use zoning districts, we require for restaurants, one parking space for every two hundred and fifty square feet. So what we're doing is for any outdoor dining area, two hundred and fifty square feet or greater, then you're subject to the parking requirement. Whether you're within the building, outside of the building, the parking requirement remains the same. The one, after some analysis in the downtown core, I don't think there are very many large outdoor dining areas in our downtown core, but we are recommending, this is in the middle of page six, under item number three, that to avoid impacting the downtown core, we're recommending that this parking requirement, requirement only apply to the mixed-use NB, SB, and MUN zoning districts. And I provided each one of you with a copy of the zoning map, so you can kinda see geographically where that would come into play. The next item had to do with distances required between buildings. As you recall, we discussed one area in the zoning ordinance that had a regulation for a distance between buildings on separate lots. We wanted to remove that, and during the course of that discussion, the planning commission had several questions in terms of, well, what is the required setback, you know, between buildings, from a building code and fire code perspective? So staff went back to staff from fire and building, and determined and discovered that there is no real setback requirement from the building code perspective. It really depends on the fire resistant rating requirements that are set into place based upon the setback. So it's not that they start with a setback first, they determine, they look and see what the setback is, and then they impose fire resistant ratings from the building code. However, with the fire department, after staff conferred with the fire marshal, the preference is to have at least five feet between buildings for passage, not necessarily for fire purposes, but for access. And staff went through the zoning ordinance again, and discovered that there is a three-foot minimum distance requirement in section eighteen-oh-four-oh-seven-oh, under the townhouse development type. So we're proposing to modify that to five feet. Again, so that would be a change from three feet to five feet. So that's not directly addressing, I think, the comment in terms of, you know, large distances between buildings, but it does, you know, get us to one additional cleanup item, so that was worthwhile to bring up. There was also a crest, request, moving on to the next item, for how, a request for clarification on regulating convenience food establishments, establishments in the MUN district. In the previous staff report, we had requested a requirement of a use permit, but after looking closely at the notes, we realized that that must've been a typo, because a conditional use permit is already required for this district, in this district, for convenience food establishments. Item number six had to do with setting increased limitation for certain uses near our districts. On page seven of your staff report, we list several different uses where we noted, we may wanna provide additional oversight when these uses are located proximal to the our districts. There was a request that we clarify, under what geographical circumstances would these limitations come into play? And we clarified that in the language, that whenever one of these uses, whenever the shop front is facing onto an our district, that's when the limitation would be imposed. And also, whenever you're sharing a property line with an our district, the limitations would be imposed. So the request was to clarify under what circumstances would these regulations come into play? The next item, item number seven, had to do with allowed stories in the MUN zoning district. Right now, in the hard copy zoning ordinance, it lists for the MUN, a maximum of four stories. However, in the online version, which is provided online through a company called Code Publishing, it lists the height is two. So we noted this discrepancy, first of all, and we went to correct it. Code Publishing, they have certain procedures that they take very seriously, and they're not just gonna say, we're gonna clean this up. We want an ordinance to, you know, show us that this is a change, even though it's a correction that needs to be made. So that's why we're presenting it to the commission. But in addition, there was discussion that maybe the height shouldn't be four, and maybe it was really meant to be two. So we went and looked further into the zoning ordinance, and discovered that for the area that's along East San Carlos Avenue, there already is a height limit imposed, where it's not fifty feet, like it would be in other areas of MUN, but in this particular area, it would be reduced to between thirty and thirty-five feet, and only when it's approved through a conditional use permit. So that kinda adds an additional layer of protection in the East San Carlos area. In addition, the zoning ordinance requires for this particular, within this zoning district, additional measures to reduce the four-story based upon the distance between residential districts. So if you're close to a residential district, then you have to have greater setbacks and so forth. So this zoning, this regulation in place has restrictions in the East San Carlos area, and also when you're in proximity to our districts. So at this point, staff is maintaining their recommendation to do the cleanup at four stories for the online version, and then leaving everything else the same as it presently exists, where there's already measures to limit the height in the east area, in the East San Carlos area, and to increase setbacks when in close proximity to our districts. And we can certainly talk about that. There was also a request, as we were looking at certain uses and their proximity to residential districts, it came up through the course of discussion, that freight and truck terminals and warehouse uses are permitted in the IH zoning district, and as you can see on your map, there is an area, I think it's a long terminal way, where, where it does butt right against residential uses. So the commission asked staff to look into imposing a land use limitation, whenever this use is adjacent... and warehouse uses are permitted in the IH zoning district. And as you can see on your map, there is an area, I think it's a long terminal way where it does butt right against residential uses. So the commission asked staff to look into imposing a land use limitation. Whenever this use is adjacent to the RS zoning district, that it be required only after approval of a, or be allowed only after approval of a conditional use permit. So that's our recommendation to address that issue. The next item, sidewalk clearance requirements. We, staff had recommended changing the minimum sidewalk clearance from six feet to four feet. And the reason for that is that if we required six feet, many of the outdoor dining areas in our downtown core would not be complying with the regulation. And the commission had asked staff to explain where this four foot came from, was it consistent with ADA requirements? So we went back to the city's public work staff and confirmed that the four feet meets the minimum clearance required for, per ADA requirements. So that would be consistent with that. And then finally, the last item, non-conforming setbacks. I guess this is the item that has a little bit more discussion in it compared to some of the others. When we looked at this, we started from the point of view, let's look back at the whole section of the zoning ordinance. What is the purpose of the non-conforming use area in terms of allowing existing uses to continue, to allowing existing structures to be continued and maintained? And the zoning ordinance is actually quite clear, as you'll see on page nine of your staff report, under item number 10. It's basically clear in that it says that structures have the right to continue and be maintained so long as they're not altered or enlarged. It also says, you know, that the maintenance and non-structural repairs are permitted if they do not enlarge or extend the structure. I think where some of the confusion and a little bit less clarity came into play is reflected in the last bullet on page nine where it talks about continuation of the non-conforming setbacks shall not be considered, provided that you maintain 50% of the wall, 50% of the roof. And it got into these numerical formulas that could apply to that area of the addition. And what staff believes, and this would further the intent of the zoning ordinance, which basically says, the reason we have these standards in place is so that we can progressively achieve the desired look and appearance of the city. And that's why, you know, for new development, we have certain standards in place. So what staff is recommending to try and keep it very straightforward in the non-conforming areas, that when you do an addition, the addition just needs to comply with existing requirements, even if that means you move the addition in a few, you know, feet in from the existing non-conforming setback, it's new, it needs to comply. And then if anything should need to be done to an existing non-conforming area, whether it's basic maintenance or structural repairs, there's already provisions for that in the non-conforming section. And we wanted specifically to remove the 50% exterior wall and the 50% roof because it's not up to staff to determine what materials get left. It's really the building official's responsibility because it could be that maybe some framing needs to be taken out or a portion of the, of the foundation. So we wanted that to be left to the building official and then just keep it very clear and say that any addition, if you're doing, if you're adding on that component, needs to comply with all the existing setback, all the existing development standards. So these are the 10 items that the planning commission had requested additional information on, and we're certainly available to discuss those or answer any questions you have. Before I conclude, there is one more thing. The great thing about doing a zoning ordinance cleanup is, you know, we begin to see other things that we need to take into consideration and that we may want to address. This is a new item that was recently discovered and it has to do with minimum lot size requirements for our industrial zoning districts. We have four industrial zoning districts, industrial arts, light industrial, heavy industrial, and planned industrial. And we noticed that for some of our heavier industrial zoning classifications, we allow a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size, which is the same minimum lot size in our RS6 single-family residential zoning district. And the reason we bring this up is because our industrial areas are very valuable areas. They consist mainly of large, large land areas, sometimes they're half an acre to multiple acres in size. And there are economic development reasons why we want to consider maintaining the size of our industrial parcels and not letting them be subdivided into, at the most extreme, 5,000 square foot lots. So this is something that, again, just came up. We started to do some research and compare our minimum lot size requirements against other jurisdictions' minimum lot size requirements for their industrial districts. And as this table represents, for example, the city of South San Francisco, you know, they, theirs is 10,000 square feet minimum lot size for certain zoning districts. And for geographical areas, it's a minimum of one acre. For Menlo Park, you know, theirs is much higher at 25,000 square feet and even three acres in a certain zoning district that they identify as M3. Santa Clara regulates all of theirs to be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. And Mountain View has 20,000 and 40,000 square foot minimum lot size requirements for their industrial areas. As you can see, the city of San Carlos, our 5,000 square foot minimum lot size, we believe is problematic. And I know Al wants to provide additional context for that as well, so as soon as I finish, he can also supplement, add to this discussion. So I know you all have a copy of the zoning map, but just for context purposes, we have a very limited supply of industrial parcels. As you can see, most of them occur, or all of them occur, on the east side of Old County Road and to the east of the freeway as well. And these are noted in this area. This is our limited industrial area. We have a professional industrial area here and here, in just actually two locations. And then our heavy industrial occurs north of Industrial Road here and then south of Industrial Road. We have some more towards our southern limit line. And then industrial arts, we're not so worried about because that's really tailored for small-scale artisan-oriented types of industrial uses. And as we began to look at these areas, I know this is a little bit hard to read, but for example, this parcel here is 150,000 square feet, same with this one. Our IP is 795,000 square feet. We have some smaller ones here. I know you can't see this, but this little rectangle here is 10,000 square feet. So you can imagine that a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet is half the size of that. So we really begin, we really need to evaluate, you know, what subdivision of 5,000 square foot, the impacts, the negative impacts that would due to some of our industrial areas. So this is just a representation of different parcel sizes. Here's the area off of Old County Road in between Terminal and Branston. There's 20,000 square foot lots here. There's a smaller one at 7,000 square feet, but as you can see, there's some large ones at one and a half acres, additional ones at 30,000, in the 30,000 square foot range. So they are quite larger than the minimum lot size requirements. This is further south off of, again, Old County Road in Varian. These are, much of the land here in this zoning district is much larger, 54,000 to 64,000, three, over three and a half acres, 18,000, 36,000, 39,000, et cetera. So what we are recommending at this point is, one, we wanted to notify the commission that we see this as an issue that needs to be addressed, but we're not requesting any action be taken tonight because we need additional time to study it and evaluate it. And within that context, we're also recommending that the planning commission not adopt the resolution tonight, but continue the item so that we can allow staff more time to address the minimum lot sizes and then come back and then do a complete adoption of the ordinance that would include staff's recommendations and the planning commission's motion, should you choose to do so, of the recommendations that we come back with. So for tonight, we can continue to discuss those 10 items we presented, but there's no urgency to do it tonight. So we would recommend, let's have our discussion on those 10 items or any others that you would like to discuss and a conversation about minimum lot sizes, should you choose to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Any questions for Lisa before, now remember, this is a public hearing, so we want to hear from the public first. So any quick questions from Lisa, the staff at this point? Okay.
On page 298, this is the cottage food, where it says, "All required parking spaces shall be used for the purpose of parking vehicles." What does that mean?
That means that we want cottage food operators to use their garage for parking.
I thought that's what you may have said, but, so like...
That means if we're going to permit you to do this, you have to get a use permit through the zoning administrator. So in exchange for that, we want the homeowner, the operator, to make a commitment, an agreement, that they're going to use their parking, their garage for parking. Because the idea is that you could, you're going to have an additional full-time employee and you're going to have direct sales onsite. So if you're using your garage for storage, then your own two cars are somewhere else. So it's a commitment...
And does that mean if you have a two-car garage, you need to be able to stick two cars in there?
Whatever onsite parking is required, well, whatever current onsite parking exists, we want you, we just want you to use the parking, the parking areas for parking and for no other purpose.
Yes, I would read it as you would use your garage to put cars in.
Yep.
Or motorcycles.
You guys are...
Only for, only for cottage food operations that trigger this level of scrutiny.
If you don't have another, yeah.
Meaning that they're having customers coming.
No, I didn't think it was triggered by customers coming. I thought it was triggered just by having an employee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One employee and you, you gotta, you gotta fit two cars in your two-car garage?
Just to clarify, whether you have one full-time employees, one full-time employee, you still require a zoning administrator use permit? Or if you have no outside employee, but you're having direct sales? Or if you're doing both, you'll still need a use permit through the zoning administrator?
Because you could still have 20 people or four people at a time showing up at your residence.
But I think that's an excellent point and we should discuss the merits of it. But first, I would like to hear from the public.
Okay.
Just, just before we start discussing the merits of these. And do you have a speaker card, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you. If you can hand it over to, to staff, they'll bring it up.
You what?
Speaker card.
A speaker card. We'll go ahead and get you one. Thank you.
Was speaking of the property on Laurel Street, correct?
No, we are now on the, on the zoning ordinance amendments. The apartment on Laurel Street was previously discussed and closed.
1673 Laurel?
Yeah, that has already been discussed and closed.
That's why I showed up.
Oh, okay.
I'm the next-door neighbor.
We have your written comments for the record. But it's, yeah, we have the letter.
Whatever, and she helped put them in there.
Yeah, we do have the letter and that is submitted for, for public record.
That's all I'm here for, to keep me in the loop. I just want to stay on the loop. To let the new owners and somebody talk to me once in a while. I wasn't notified.
At this point, Lisa?
That's fine, sir. And staff can follow up with you after the meeting and we can make sure that you have the information regarding the project and what the next steps include, so.
You didn't let me know the first time. You got a car? I got places to go and things to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm not here to...
Well, at this point, I, I know that we can go ahead, since there's no public, public comments for this. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and...
I don't think we can close the public.
Actually, I don't think we can because we're continuing it. Okay, but we can, but we can go ahead and have commissioner comments and discussions then at this point. And we could stay with the cottage food if...
Why do we, I'm sorry, we did last time, just moved... Why do we have to continue it?
Um, to discuss the new, the new item that was raised about minimum...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I caught that. All right.
Yeah, if you guys want to go, just in order. Why don't we do that? Okay, so one through 10 listed in the front of your staff report. Is there any additional questions or concerns or comments for staff on number one? No?
No.
Law is the law. Number two, cottage food operations. David, you're mentioning that, and I think you bring up a good point, a lot of people that would be running home businesses might use their garage for said business. Are we comfortable taking that space away, in a sense, and putting it for parking? And I don't want to...
No, no, that's right. But I mean, I guess it is a privilege. I mean, I guess I understand it as a privilege to, to be able to have an employee or sell. And I guess I, I understand, you know, the desire to increase the amount of parking. I just, I don't know. I try so hard to get two cars into my, my two-car garage and it's awful hard. You really can't store anything in your garage if you want to, unless you have an enormous garage. It just seems a little, a little onerous, but I mean, I do understand that it is a privilege, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna jump up and down.
What do you think the compromise is? Is it something like one, at least one of, if you have a two-car garage, at least one of the parking spaces must be available or...
That's what I was thinking, but again, I mean, it was just, it was sort of a gut reaction, you know, just based on personal experience, my own parking situation and, you know, wanting to be fair. But it is a privilege to, to have a cottage food operation. I guess, I don't know whether this is, to me, having an employee doesn't seem like it changes the, the parking situation all that much to me, frankly. I could actually see more of a rationale for requiring you to utilize both your parking spaces in your garage if you were actually selling and people were coming to your house. But again, I don't, I really don't feel strongly about it. It was just sort of a gut reaction.
I think we talked a little bit, because you missed that.
Yeah.
So we talked a little bit about that in the scenario where we had maybe two part-timers coming, come to work either, either on overlapping schedules, but they're both there at the same time. So our concern was the way it was worded, it's, it's equivalent to one full-time employee and the equivalency is what the issue is. So you may have two part-timers there at any given time.
Or people who work a quarter of the time.
Yeah.
Let's just say, if you guys are comfortable with this, I'm not going to try and convince you otherwise. I'm really, I'm okay with it.
I'm just curious, do we have a lot of cottage food industries in San Carlos?
We haven't had any requests, but this is a new law that was passed.
Right.
I think it came into effect at the beginning of 2012, maybe?
I thought it was even more recent than that.
Maybe 2013. Yeah, it's not, it's not that old, but, you know, as long as we're doing updates to the zoning ordinance, a couple of things that we're also, you know, addressing as well as making sure our ordinance is consistent with state law.
I guess, yeah, I guess it's hard for me to see what, what kind of burden we might be putting on these little, little food places if we take both their garage spaces away. And I guess when I originally read it, I was reading parking spaces not as a garage because I can't fit a car in my garage. It's this big.
Could you make the...
It's what we call not conforming.
If you want a cottage food industry, you're gonna have to figure out how to stick your car in there.
I would have to build a different garage. It is literally meant for a carriage and a horse and buggy, I think.
Could you make it simply, one parking space is required and then additional parking spaces dependent upon whether you have additional employees? So if you have more than one employee, then you're required to use both, or up, you know, two more?
Could this be written in a way to give staff discretion to require, like, depending upon the parking situation?
That's something that we could take a look at and kind of give you more flexibility. It sounds like the commission is talking about under different scenarios. I heard that if you have one employee, well, that's not going to make an impact, but certainly if you have direct onsite sales. So maybe it's something, a condition that would apply only for those operators who are having people come to their...
And it also depends, like, so, and I love saying this and I haven't gotten a chance to say it in a long time. You guys have this right here. See this house right here by the G? That, the last house in San Carlos? The last house? That's me. I have no parking, like, because I'm on San Carlos Avenue, right across from Carmont High School, so I have no parking. So if I wanted to put in cottage food, I would want the... no parking. So if I wanted to put in cottage food, I would want the city to tell me that I needed to fit two cars in my garage, because I would be impacting the neighborhood if, if I was, like, using other neighborhood parking, because there's really no neighborhood parking. But like, if, if it were somewhere else, like, you know, way down on Dartmouth somewhere, where they've got tons of street parking, you know, why would we make the people, you know, totally clean out their garage?
I would suggest that, you know, it's triggered at a certain point, like, if you have more than one employee at a time, or if you're selling out of the house. So if, for example, you are doing a cottage food business, and you have one employee, you probably wouldn't need to clean out your garage and, and all of that. But if you had two employees, you would, you would need to, to do that. Or if you were selling out of the house, then you would need to have additional parking. So the, sort of, you know, increasing the impact that you have on the, the area around you would increase the number of parking spaces that you would need to provide of your own.
So do you think for the next meeting, then, staff could come back with some flexible language surrounding?
Yes, I, I think I understand the direction this is heading, so we can come back with some language that addresses the if-then scenario, those scenarios.
Perfect.
I would never suggest coming back if this was, like, the only thing.
Yeah.
Right.
Sounds like...
But we've got others.
We've got other stuff, right?
Yeah.
Anything else on cottage food operations?
So the question I have is, so we've put this in place, how do we enforce it? So it's a minor use permit, and then, say, one of the neighbors starts complaining because somebody's parking in front of their house all the time, or they feel like the business is, is too big and is creating parking problems or other problems. How do we deal with complaints for this if it's a minor use permit? Do they appeal it to the planning commission? Do they appeal it to the zoning administrator? Well, I don't, I don't see an enforcement mechanism for this.
Yes, well, we do have code enforcement, so when the cottage food operator gets their use permit approval by the zoning, zoning administrator, there will be conditions of approval that they need to adhere to. And oftentimes, we've done this before, in fact, on other zoning administrator-level use permits, is we can include a condition that allows the zoning administrator to revoke the use permit if there are continuous complaints and, you know, send it on up to a higher-level decision-making body, or just completely revoke the use permit if there are a number of issues. So that's always something that we can add into these as a condition of approval.
I would like to see that added, so that, what I'm worried about is that, at some point, we're gonna get lots of little complaints, and I'd like to see those addressed so that they don't become problems for us. Okay?
Okay, so we can put that in. Great. Any other comments or concerns or questions on cottage food operations?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Parking requirements for outdoor dining areas. This is kind of a new one.
Okay with that.
I think, I think what you guys wrote is...
Yeah.
I think it's great. It's good.
All right. Number four, distances between required buildings. My only question would be, is there any, would we be doing, would we be doing any sort of disservice, I guess, to, to increasing that space? Are there any current, are there any current buildings that don't meet that five-foot, that five-foot distance between buildings already?
Well, this would be for new, new development.
Right. I'm, I'm just curious if it would, if we'd be adding, I don't know, too much, too much hardship to a new, would it look weird, is my point, to have five feet in between every building?
Five feet, five feet in between townhomes.
Right.
Well, again, just for clarification purposes, this would come into play if the buildings are detached. So if they're going to be detached, does it require that they be detached?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or concerns about distances between buildings? Number five, regulations for convenience food establishments in the MUN zoning district.
I can say I don't have anything on any of the others.
Limitation for certain uses near our zoning districts. Allowed, allowed story, stories in the MUN zoning district.
Yes.
I was gonna say, I thought, I thought we might.
So I actually looked at, and, and I'm thinking, here's the issue that I'm trying to address. The west side of Laurel Street is all MUN, okay? And, and that's the one where we just had the building that came in, and it was, it was, they wanted four stories, but they were essentially told that...
Three works better.
Three works better, okay? And one of the things that if you actually look at the zoning code already, if it's within 50 feet of a RS district, which all of those properties are, you essentially have to keep the height to 40 feet, which means that what we're gonna have are a series of buildings, at best, that are gonna have, the front half of them is four stories, and then the back half of them are gonna sort of make this sort of half of a pyramid.
Right.
Okay? And now you also have setbacks on either side, anywhere from five to 15 feet, and you have setbacks from the front of as much as 15 feet. And so I'm looking at this small space that would be a fourth story, and I'm, I'm thinking, is that really feasible to have a fourth story on these buildings? Or does it make sense to essentially say, you know, let's just make them three stories? I'm just looking at the, the building envelope of a potential fourth story and, and saying, you know, if it's, if it's 35 by 35, or what are we gonna do up there? What is it going to look like? Or is it better to really give the developers the direction and say, what we really are looking for are more projects like what we saw the last time?
Right.
Where it was three stories?
And I, I see your point, Scott. I think, in essence, maybe it could have saved the developer a lot of time on the forefront if, if our...
We were honest.
Had said, really, we're just not gonna approve this unless it's three stories. And is that, is that kind of what you're, what you're thinking, that...
That's sort of what I'm thinking, is, is, you know, looking at that and saying, you know, all of these properties back up to a resident, single-family residential...
But not all of them do, actually. There's the MUN over here that doesn't, and there's the MUN here that doesn't.
Right, I saw that too. Those, yeah.
Yeah, that's businesses right now and part, and entrance to a park.
So, I mean, so there are some MUN that you can, right?
And then my other, my other concern, though, is, I mean, of course...
And it's here too, actually. There's a little pocket here as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to, just to summarize...
Those are all businesses right now.
There are some, so there are some MUN that don't necessarily directly, but a residential, a residential use. I guess also, my bigger question, though, would be, this is, this is a very, I guess, this is a larger debate around, around zoning, and I'm just, I'm just curious, just the stories, is that something we can even do at this point?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I apologize. I missed that last, that last point or the question.
What do you think about four stories?
Versus three along Walnut Street?
Well, it's actually, I don't even know if that's so much the question, because it's, I guess it's just a broader question about reducing the, the height allowed in the MUN districts in general from four to three. And then I guess the subset question is, if there were a mechanism just to lower them along Walnut, and I don't know how you would do that without creating a new zoning district, but maybe you could.
Well, you, you could, actually. We've done a lot with footnotes in our zoning, so you could leave it MUN with a footnote saying that, but along this street.
Oh, cool.
Or this side of, of the street. We, so we've done that through the ordinance. So two issues. One is economics, and one of the reasons for the height in the, in the, well, the height essentially, was to make it economically feasible to, to make these developments work, along with the parking requirements that the city has as well. As you saw from that one that was approved by the planning commission recently on Walnut, they did underground parking. And, you know, to, to get the parking in there, to, you know, make it work, it's very expensive. And to meet our parking requirements for the units and in that. So, but what we did see with that one development is that, at least in this market right now, that it's feasible to do a three-story development project there and still make it work with underground parking. Probably the, the margins are, you know, pretty tight, but we saw that it was actually feasible to do that. So that, that's, that's kind of an answer to part of the question. The other question that comes up is density. And, you know, in the downtown, I think the idea is that you're, you're trying to put your housing, the housing that you do need and that you're trying to get as part of your housing element, your general plan, in the, in the, you know, retail commercial core, in the, in the areas in the downtown, as opposed to in other neighborhoods, in other strictly, you know, residential neighborhoods. So that's another issue. I mean, you'd be removing density, you'd, but on the other hand, you'd be, you know, a little more sensitive to the people who are backing up, you know, single-family residential development, backing right up to next door. And I think that there was one other issue, but I'm gonna pass at this point. So I mean, I think if you did it on one side of the street along Walnut, you know, we've seen that it can be done from an economic development standpoint, you're, you're losing density. One of the other things is, I think, is, was what people are interested in seeing, and what I've heard a lot of people discuss, is the desire for change in the South Laurel and Central Laurel areas, because it's been years since anything has changed there. And so I think there's a general desire to see some improvements and some investment in those areas of our community. And this new zoning, as you can see, is really spurring new investment. We have the one that you saw tonight, the one right across the street, and the reason that we're seeing those developments is, is, I think, chiefly because you've, you've made the box big enough to make it economically feasible to, to do this. So those are, I'm, I'm giving you sort of a balanced approach. I think that if the planning commission was interested in, in really, in looking at that along Walnut Street, maybe, or right where it butts single-family, then maybe we can come back and do a little research for you and tell you some of the other issues, if we have any. But that's something you certainly could consider and recommend to the city council.
I'd maybe be interested in, in a little more research on that. Not that, I'm actually leaning, I guess my point is, is that I would like us to be in the best service of potential developers as possible, too. I'd hate to have them go through the process of designing a four, a four-story building, only to have to get it knocked down at a point because it's not, because it doesn't fit the existing character of that particular side of Walnut. So if you think we should do it case by case, and, and that, that's what staff thinks is most appropriate, then okay. But I would, I would like a little more information, because I think maybe if we could set it out earlier, that the desire is a lower story.
I guess, but at the same time, by allowing, at least in theory, the four-story, you kind of create room for negotiation.
True.
I mean, every time, every time, it's like, okay, well, if you're giving them the max, so now make it two. So...
So one-story building for all.
And if you go to three, it may be two that you're negotiating for. And so...
That's a good point.
You know, the economics between a three and a four is very, very significant.
Right.
So even though it may, you know, be, it requires some investment to, to explore the idea of a four-story, from a developer's standpoint, it's, it's really worth it to do that. So, you know, I think it was a good test case, the one that you just saw, that going from four to three, they got it, you know? But still, there was a lot of pushback on the three, too, as well.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, there's a lot of pushback on the three, and there's a lot of single-family residences right in close proximity to these areas. And so the idea is that you step down as you get closer to single-family residences. And so if you're allowing four stories on the other side, on the east side of something like Laurel Street, and then you're allowing four stories on the west side of Laurel Street, you're not really stepping down to single-family homes. You're creating a four-story building right next to a single-family home. Whereas if you require three stories, what you may actually find is that, over time, you actually consolidate some of these properties, because now it's beneficial to have a larger piece of property that you can actually build a three-story building on than to have all these small unit, small parcels along Laurel Street. And so that, that may be another...
From a massing standpoint, you know, you're gonna have a, a massive three, three sto, I mean...
Three lot.
You know, three lot, three-story building. I mean, which ones are the neighbors gonna like less?
Rather than three four-story buildings?
Well, we haven't proved a four-story building yet.
And that's, that's sort of the point, is, is, you know...
I think, no, I mean, I think the point was, was brought up from an appropriate test case. I see your, I see your point, Scott. I think, I think certainly, maybe just a little more information on what the impact might be if, if we do decide to do that, though. I'm not sure I'm ready for it, but yeah.
Okay.
But I think it's a fair point. On that note, anything on number eight, freight, freight truck terminal warehouses?
Nope.
Anything on number nine, sidewalks, sidewalk clearance requirements? I just had one thing, and it was just based on our discussion at the last meeting. Is there any way to codify the enforcement of that? If, if it's going from six to four, it would be really nice if that four was more vigorously enforced, as far as...
Right, and, and we do have a, a procedure for that, and we, we do get complaints, you know, and we send our code enforcement out there to let the operator know that, you know, you know, you're, keep your chairs and tables and your umbrellas all within a certain area. You need to keep the four-foot clearance. So it does take more work for the city's code enforcement team to do so, but we do get complaints now and then. It's a little bit more difficult on the weekend, because we're not here, but we, you know, take each and every one of those complaints seriously, and we do follow up on those. So that's, that's kind of the best that we can do.
So has anybody tried laying out four feet and trying to walk two people opposite one another in a four-foot area?
Well, I'm pretty small. I'm probably not the person to ask, but...
Okay, so...
Come on, Jessica.
If you actually look, if you, you know, I can understand decreasing...
But if it's ADA requirement...
Well, that's the minimum ADA requirement. What they're saying is that you cannot go any smaller than that, and that's enough room for a wheelchair to get through. That, that's not a wheelchair and somebody walking side, you know, beside the wheelchair.
Right.
That's, I guess my question with all of this is, do we really want to make our sidewalks so small that people have to go single file?
Well, I think that's the trade-off. Do, either it's bigger sidewalks, or it's removing the outdoor dining that I think really adds something special to the downtown.
I, I think that there's a trade-off here, okay? And I think that if you orient the, the tables in such a way that the chairs are not backing out... tables in such a way that the chairs are not backing out into the walkway, then you can have a four-foot table, put four people at that table, and still have adequate room for the tables and for the individuals. I went down and measured the walkways, okay? So they're nine feet, okay? I measured sidewalks all over the city. We don't have any sidewalks that are less than five feet.
Yeah, I would be surprised.
Okay? So why are we making sidewalks in the downtown four feet wide as far as the accessible area? It seems to me like we're erring on the side of giving the businesses, you know, five, six feet of our sidewalks, okay? And we're limiting what the public actually has access to on our public sidewalks, okay? These are for people to move up and down the street. And what we're saying is that it's more important that we give it to the business for them to have additional customers to be sitting outside than it is for us to have access for people to walk up and down the street.
I think it's a valid point, Scott. I really do. I think what I was thinking with the sidewalks wasn't so much that we were giving it to the businesses. It was more that, I know, I know for me, I enjoy the atmosphere of.
I do, too.
Seeing people sitting outside, even if I'm not partaking, which I'm usually not. And I'm wondering, is that trade-off of that more limited space to walk worth it? I think it is, but I think you bring up an excellent point. And that doesn't mean I share the majority opinion either. I think you make a good point.
You're dealing with, you're dealing with strollers, you're dealing with people walking their dogs.
Strollers, dogs.
You're dealing with all kinds of individuals and situations where people are using this. You know, I would.
Well, and the last thing you want to do is make it less walkable as a downtown.
Right. I mean, if we have a downtown that's not walkable.
Right.
Then why would anybody want to come to our downtown?
I agree. I think it's a valid.
Okay? So I think there's a compromise here. Maybe it's not that we give up six feet. The six feet seems unreasonably, unreasonable to me now, okay? But I'm wondering, is it unreasonable to limit it to make it four feet instead of five feet?
Well, Al, can I have your opinion on this? Would you, would you mind weighing in as far as what the, I assume the businesses have been asking for, for the change from six to four feet? Would changing it to five feet be a undue hindrance on those businesses? Who would we be impacting?
You know, I, I mean, I, just in the conversations that I have with restaurateurs on a fairly regular basis, I would, I would probably say that they would be concerned with that. You will probably, you know, get some pushback on that. I mean, it's, you know, I think that there's really an enforcement issue here. And I think that, you know, we've all used Laurel Street during business hours and this real, you know, and I think a lot of the problems stem from things kind of flowing out into the area that's supposed to be the sidewalk area, like umbrellas. And I agree that there's some chairs there and things like that. But people generally tend to get by. It's more of an inconvenience than it is a sort of an accessibility or danger to people. It's just more of an inconvenience that people kind of understand, I think, in the downtown. One of the things that, being a former public works director, is that my understanding was that the brick line that you see down the middle of the sidewalk, it was intended as a demarcation line for the restaurants in the sidewalk café areas. And so, and I think that's what historically they've all understood as their go-to line. And when the downtown improvements were constructed, my understanding is that they also paid into the district to get that done. And I think there's somewhat of an ownership to some extent of that demarcation where the bricks are. And they know that that's how far they can go. So historically, I think that's been.
Is that the four-foot?
Yeah. That would be four and a half feet because the sidewalks are typically nine feet from curb to the building. So let's make it four and a half feet, okay? And say that that brick line is the demarcation, if that is enough room for people to walk by. So I would be willing to live with that brick line at four and a half feet rather than.
Since we're bringing a few things back, do you think we, would you mind if I just go and just check that measurement?
Sure. We can check the measurement. We can also go back and see if, you know, maybe talk to some folks. You know, I think it would be important to kind of get, take the pulse of some folks down there and see if that's their understanding and maybe look in the records a little bit and ask around. Not many of the folks that constructed those improvements are around, but I can certainly ask. And I'm pretty sure that that's, and it would also be easy to enforce.
Right.
If everybody knew that, hey, there's a line right there, and you're not supposed to go past. And really, that's what I think it's supposed to be.
That means we're going to have to enforce the chairs not going out past that line, okay?
I'd agree with you there.
So putting a.
Do you think flasers?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying that people tend to, you know, do this, okay?
Yeah.
So now you've really got it down to, you know, two and a half, three feet in those, in those areas. So if we could keep it to that, that brick line and say, you know, you've got to orient it or you've got to set it up so that, you know, you're not going out past that brick line. And enforce it, then I think that that's a reasonable compromise.
I'm a little concerned at this point that Scott is angling to have it called the master's line. But no.
No, I think that's a fair point. And I think we've.
I just think it's, it's.
I think we've talked about it.
We've gone into my 9:30 humor time.
Okay.
No, but I agree. I think the points were well stated. And Al, I think it'd be great if you checked the pulse and checked the measurement and bring that back.
We'll do that.
Finally, non-conforming setbacks, which was number 10. And does anybody have anything on that? I just had a clarification. Lisa, I understood from the presentation, we would be taking out the 50%, 50% wording. Am I right?
That would be correct.
The wording I'm reading on nine. Okay, okay. So I just wanted to make sure I was, I was reading it correctly. And it is out, right?
I saw it. I saw it out.
Okay.
I specifically.
Forgive me if I'm the one delaying it.
Looked.
And just for reference, it's on page 213, and red line strikeout.
Thank you.
And some yellow highlighting.
So that's the 10? I'm just wondering, since.
I see it. Thank you.
Since planning is making us come back on these again, you know, whether or not Jesse should punish them by asking them to look at increasing parking requirements for residential buildings. You think about that, Jesse?
Well.
Does anybody else have any comments or concerns for non-conforming setbacks?
I'm only partially kidding.
No, I'm.
No, I know. I know. I know you are.
We are in non.
It's come up a couple times. And I, I mean, I'm always, obviously open to looking at that. I mean, it.
You always make a really good point. Like, you know, you don't think for six, for six apartments, are they, you know, six two-bedroom apartments, they really only need nine spaces?
I mean, there's, there's rules and then there's reality, right? I mean, the realization that we've got, we've got a parking issue here, and the zoning does allow for this to happen. However, we still, you know, to get, to continue to see these developments where you're, oh, you are pushing the zoning a little bit. And you are trying to, I mean, the thing that always triggers for me is, you know, the rule, the 1,500 square feet, no parking needed for commercial. While I understand that's the rule, the reality is you're going to have, I mean, they had a café in their, in their picture. So.
A café and a bookstore.
Yeah. So you, it's obviously somewhat higher traffic, yet there's really no parking requirement for it.
At least took up the other half.
So again, and that's why sometimes I ask the question, hoping to have some sort of enlightenment about it. But it's the same thing every time. You know, the other development on Laurel that we approved, that was split up into commercial.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
I mean, again, you would, you know, you find ways around the rules, but at the same time, the reality is, we need more parking.
So is the request for staff to look into adjusting our parking requirements?
I would suggest that what we ask is, are there ways that we can work within the zoning code to solve parking problems rather than create additional parking problems?
Yeah, that would be a good way of putting it.
Okay. And just throw that out and leave it to them to see if, if there is something, if there is, great. If there isn't.
It's a tough problem.
I mean, I guess, you know, for me, I would be satisfied if you came back and you said, this is the standard. You know, that what we're doing right now is the standard. And then maybe just stop folks like the development Laurel, where they divided up the commercial so they didn't have to put any parking. I mean.
Right.
Okay. You know, that was a little, that was a little much, Frank. Hey, all's fair and love in zoning. I mean, they, they did comply with the zoning requirements, but I don't know that that's what was anticipated. At a minimum, maybe we could, you know, consider cleaning that up. And if everything else is within the standard and there's like, and the standard isn't one more, two more parking spaces, you know, so be it. But, you know, I guess it would be nice if the standard were more parking spaces. Because I do join with Jesse that the idea that you're going to have two-bedroom apartments, and they're only going to have nine cars, six two-bedroom apartments, I mean.
And a couple small, small cars.
That's, that's great in theory. I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if they had at least 12 cars in that building. I mean, at least. But anyway.
I think.
Have we muddied the waters? Have we muddied the waters enough?
I think so.
Have you made sure that it's only going to come back one more time?
We can, you know, come back with, you know, information. I mean, we've studied parking a lot.
Yeah.
And we, in fact, as part of the San Carlos Transit Village, we had, you know, a parking expert come, you know, one of the better-known parking experts in the, in the area come and talk to at least the city council about parking and why. And I think maybe, maybe Nelson Nygaard came to the planning commission as part of the EIR. But, you know, there's, there's reasons for all this, and we can come back and talk about this. We believe that our parking standards are fair and reasonable and they're, you know, they're current, contemporary, in that we shouldn't mess around with them. That's the staff's perspective at this point. But we can certainly come back with additional information and kind of reprove the metrics. I think that, again, you know, and maybe another thing that we really need to do is to come back with you, to you on the parking study. Now, I, I can't recall if we actually did a presentation to the planning, I thought we did, but no.
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 No, I think we just did a real quick summary, right, Lisa?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what we could do is come back and show you what's really happening with downtown parking. Because there's, there's a difference between perception and reality. And we did the counts recently on, you know, at lunch and at dinnertime and, you know, off days and giant, during Giants games and all kinds of different parking counts. So we can actually show you in the downtown where the parking problems are occurring, what time of day, and how many parking spaces we actually have. And I think what we found is that we could probably solve some of those problems just on the street. So there's a, there's a, you know, a sort of a balancing act between the public parking, which is the lion's share of downtown parking is public, versus what you are required to provide in a development project. And I think that we can have that dialogue and present that data to you. Maybe even at the next meeting, we could present to you that information to give you a better understanding of the differences between those two kind of metrics and the dichotomy there.
Al, I mean, I believe every, I mean, I, we all, I think, go to downtown San Carlos on a regular enough basis, I assume, to, you know, understand that sometimes there's parking problems, but usually we can find a spot. I mean, I get that. But I guess the concern is, and I share that, or maybe it's only my concern, is if the dream is to have a line of mixed use in Central and South Laurel, each one of those having parking that, based on our common sense, which may be wrong, I mean, just because it's common doesn't mean that it's right.
Right.
But based on our common sense, doesn't have enough parking, just because there's, you know, just barely enough now, or there's enough now, but it's, you know, at times it gets kind of, you know, kind of tough. If the dream becomes reality, our concern, my concern, I guess I should say, is that in the future, it's going to be a problem. And is this, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but if I'm right, then maybe this is the time to kind of nip it in the bud before, you know, the dream is a reality and it turns out to be not quite as dreamy as we, you know, had initially anticipated. So I'd love to hear what the parking survey has to say. But I, I mean, I take your word for it. And it's my experience, too, that generally speaking, I can find parking. I'm just worried about the future if we continue to approve mixed use with parking that's inconsistent with my experience.
I would agree with your assessment that we will have a parking problem in the future. So I'm, I'm in agreement there. I think it's more, you know what, I really can't dispute the fact that if you, you know, put dozens more units in the downtown and you really don't have enough units for those people to, you know, park in, that you're going to just exacerbate a problem. But I guess what I'm trying to get at is that we do have some ideas about how to solve the problem, and it's more on the public side. I think that as we do grow the South Laurel, Central Laurel areas, you're going to probably have to have a parking garage down there. That's what we are thinking at this point. And so how do you get there? And what do you do in the interim? And so there's some ideas about, and there's parking that you don't know about that isn't being used. And there's, there's like, how did, those are some of the interim solutions. So we will be going through this process on how do we, you know, what's an interim solution and what's the long-term solution? Because there will be a problem in the future as we grow, even as we just get better restaurants down there, right, and more of them. We're already starting to see problems, and we need to solve those, we need to find a way to solve those problems. So I'm in agreement there.
So when, as part of the parking, did you look one, two streets over into the single-family residential? Because that's where we hear the most complaints from.
Yes.
It's not the other businesses on Laurel Street. It's, it's all the people who are parking.
I think we did.
Walnut and the other streets over there because either the employees are parking over there, or somebody's parking over there in order to walk over to a restaurant or something like that. And I'm, I wonder if a parking garage there is going to solve the problem that still, will still exist. I hope it will. But for those single-family residents over there, they anticipate that even if you put a parking garage in, it's not going to solve their problem.
Well, the idea would be to, and I think that what we do see is some overflow during lunch and dinner into the Walnut Street area. So the parking study does show that there is some pressure there. And so the idea, and this is not from residential folks, this is from people, customers of those businesses down there, right? So the idea would be to get some of those customers and maybe employees, like you said, to park in a designated public parking area as opposed to in the neighborhood. So it's not so much of a residential, you know, there's too many residential units. It's more all the people coming from our community and other communities to dine and enjoy our downtown. So.
It's probably especially bad at dinnertime because people are coming home wanting to park in front of their house. And that's the same time that everybody is coming downtown to go to the restaurants. And so there's a conflict, probably for a couple of hours there between the two.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, so that's something we can look more at. Then that takes care of the 10 items. The last item that was brought up was the minimum lot size requirements for the industrial zoning district and not having. zoning district and not having them subdivide the lots. Is, that's something that, is that something staff wants to speak about at the next, at the next meeting? Okay. I just have one question that doesn't need to be answered now. I was just curious whether those few smaller lots we saw would be grandfathered or what would happen if we set a 10,000 requirement to the 7,000 square foot lots? That's all.
Yeah, you're correct. They would be grandfathered in.
Okay, that's it. All right. Well, then, do we make a motion to continue this to the next meeting? Okay, could somebody
So move?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And moving on to our next item, reports, correspondence and general information. Report on recent city council actions.
I don't have any reports from city council tonight.
Thank you. Planning Commission comments or reports? I have one. Jesse and I attended the 2014 Planning Commissioners Academy in Burlingame. And that's awesome. We had many, I don't know, I found it very useful. There were a lot of really interesting topics addressed, including a lot on CEQA, CEQA training, the state-city financial
Oh, that was great, yeah.
Conspiracy. I don't know. Financial update and how the state and city work together. I thought that was fascinating. Some other hot topics, including sober living environments, marijuana dispensaries, massage parlors, all sorts of interesting things. But I wanted to let you guys know, if you wanted to review some of the materials, that is available on Californiacities.org. And you do have to search the Planning Commissioners Academy, then go to attendees and then go to materials and you can see the materials there. Okay? And any other planning commission reports or comments? Okay. Correspondence? Was on the dials?
Yes. And to further the discussion you just had on your report from the League of California Cities, I did have our administrative staff copy for all of the commissioners, the presentations that were given at the Planning Commissioners Academy training. So it should be on the dials.
Yeah.
I'm hoping it is. It is a thick packet. There's some good information in there and also some links if you want to do some further research. And certainly if there's any items that are in there where you would like staff to follow up or provide more information, or you want to hear more about a certain topic, we're always willing to come back to the commission with additional information so that we can have a discussion on the material presented. So I'm glad you found it useful. I did too.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Any other planning staff comments, reports or updates on current projects?
Yes. To conclude for tonight, an upcoming planning commission item is an application for an addition to the property at 501 Walnut Street. This is a historic resource and there is a proposal to do an addition towards the rear of the property. So that's something that will be coming before the planning commission and in your future. And then also, just to share with the commission, there are two city council items that you may find interesting or would like to watch. The first item is going to be a discussion on the Caltrain electrification draft environmental impact report. I believe that's going to the city council on April 14th. The close of the written comment period occurs on April 29th for that draft environmental impact report. Also, as was mentioned previously with the first item on the agenda tonight, the consent item for the capital improvement project, there is a study session with the city council on April 28th for that item. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, then this meeting is adjourned at 10 to 10. Oh, and just a reminder, I believe I'm